All right, the time is 4:35 PM. I'm calling to order a work session of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for September 6th. And we'll begin with citizen public communications. As a reminder, during our work sessions, we don't have public comments during the agenda items itself, but this is an opportunity for anybody who wishes to speak about the work session item, to do so before we get started. We do have two people signed up, so I'll go ahead and start with those individuals. And if anybody else wants to speak before we get started on our work session, you can go after the two people signed up. So we'll begin with Grace, and I believe that's one of our... Oh, Grace. No, Grace. Yes.
Hi, my name is Grace Johnson, and I am seven years old. I live in Sunset Valley, and I am here to present a park. I think we should make a park named Peace Park. It will be close to public transport and be a very pretty place. It will have stones... What? Oh. Start over? Okay. Hi, my name is Grace Johnson. I am seven years old, and I live in Sunset Valley, and I am here to present a park. I think we should make a park named Peace Park. It will be close to public transport and be a very pretty place. It will have stones to honor people that passed away. It will also have trees and markers to write on the stones, a bench and a walkway. Are there any questions? What?
Talk right there. Talk right there.
Are there any questions? What? Yes. Um, like stones, trees, and markers to write on the stones?
Location unknown.
Councilor Johnson?
And what would be the purpose of the stones and the markers?
The purpose is to honor people. Like, if someone died, his name was, like, for example, Matt, then we would put, like, Matt and then their last name.
Are you?
What?
Councilor Reitz, and then Councilor Rosengard.
What location are you thinking of this?
I'm just thinking of the uplands.
In the uplands, okay.
Councilor Rosengard?
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. Oh. Okay, that's a good idea.
Thank you very much, and appreciate you coming and giving the council your vision. Thank you. All right. The next person who signed up for public comments is Gray Baker from Austin Montessori School. Thank you.
On? Yep. Mayor Bruner, city council members, citizens, and Grace, which is a wonderful job. My name is Gray Baker. I am head of school at Austin Montessori School. I'm joined today by my colleague, Dawn Mihal, who is our Director of Operations. For those of you that don't know, our campus is at the corner of Sunset Trail and Jones Road. I wanted to come here to commend the council and the citizens of Sunset Valley on their work in putting forward said proposal. In our view, it represents the height of city planning in terms of creating an inclusive process and community planning for the future honoring all needs of the community, commercial, residential, and shared use natural space. Speaking on behalf of our school community, we are always interested and engaged in projects like these because they represent opportunities for our students to expand beyond their classroom walls, expand beyond our campus walls, and engage with their local community in a different manner, whether it be enjoying it through the trails and hiking, or actual stewardship of the land. The part of your proposal that is most germane to us, or most relevant to us, based on proximity, are the uplands and Rees Drive. And I'm here to personally extend our offer in partnership. We had an opportunity, Councilman Johnson is a neighbor of ours, and we were having a conversation earlier in the year. I would like to offer our partnership to you if these plans come, if and when these plans come to fruition, for stewardship of the land and being able to be active participants in the upkeep and forward-thinking and seeing how those projects develop. I'm also here to make you aware that we are just, as a school, embarking in our own long-range master planning and reimagining our campus design. We're very much in the beginning of that process. All of our sort of visionary thinking thus far dovetails very nicely in what you've created, and it looks like we're going to have opportunities for shared community space and partnership as a function of those plans once we get a little farther down the line. We're just not far enough along in that process to articulate any specifics to you today. But I wanted to come introduce myself, express our support of the plan as it is, and thank you for your time.
Yes. Councilor Rosengard?
I'm blinded, sorry.
That's great.
We're grateful that you're here to speak and let us know that this can be something that we can work on together. No, it's not there. It's way up there. See, the sun is directly coming in my face right now. Anyway, so we're grateful that you're here, and we'd like to know if you had your druthers and you got to plan what happens between Rees and the uplands, what would you put there?
You're putting me on the spot.
Yes.
I'm going to answer your question, but I'm going to answer your question with hesitation because I am speaking about a plan that is not ready for proposal nor fully conceptualized or articulated yet. We have two key areas of interest with regard to that specific, that the uplands and the Reese Road corridor, that factor significantly into our imagining of how our campus could be utilized. And really, for us, there are two main factors. One is traffic congestion and safety with regard to our citizens who are both pedestrians and in their vehicles at arrival and departure time for our two different campuses that are directly adjacent to each other. And right now, there's a significant bottleneck, because I'm sure you've experienced it happens on Jones Road between 2:45 and 3:30 every day. And the other really, for us, is about the design criteria we need to determine how exactly we want to map out and place buildings for our full rectangular campus. Both of those have to do with what ultimately becomes of the, either part of the full Reese Road corridor that is currently undeveloped. If, in our future thinking, and again, I'm hesitant to even say this because we don't, again, have the plan articulated, I'm going to keep saying that, it would be to our mutual benefit from our perspective, yours from the traffic flow and safety position, and ours from the ease of access from both sides of our campus, both for potential ingress and egress, and certainly for first responders to be able to come to each side of the campus, to consider using some, a partial component of Reese Road as an artery, an access artery, on the west side of our campus. That doesn't necessarily mean a fully-developed road. I think that it can dovetail nicely, even with the proposal in its current iteration. But those are our considerations as we're looking at that space. Right now, we have access to both sides, and we have ease of access to the uplands from our campus just through walking. But those are kind of the design criteria components that we're looking at as we begin to master plan our future physical plant. Did that answer your question sufficiently?
May I ask this?
Councilor Rosengard?
Adding on to that, previously, we talked about directing traffic from the elementary school and the buses behind and on Reese Road, going directly behind the school, so they'd pick up the children that way instead of causing all this traffic jam on Jones. If we did something like that, would that hinder or still assist you? Because it would be a road.
I think, off the top of my head, I think anything would help, right? We're considering both of those criteria. You know, one is selfishly just about how we can develop our buildings, because where the access points are. But from a safety perspective, any kind of modification like that, in consultation with both of the schools, I think would be to both schools' benefit and to the larger community as well, just because it's so congested. And everybody does just as well as they can. We haven't had a major incident thus far. But the way that it's going now, it seems to me that it's a matter of not if, but when. And so we want to work with the city ultimately to be able to think about that long-term.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And at this time, other members of the public would switch to speak.
Lisa Versace, Pillow Road. Just wanted to give a big shout-out to the Parks and Open Space Committee. I think we all worked really well together. I just want to reiterate that we were a great cross-section of Sunset Valley population, all different streets were, had a presence in our group. I know that in this proposal that you're about to consider, there has been some funds already spent in design of both Upper Cougar Creek and the uplands, imagining of what these projects might look like. I just want to stress that what's come out of the Parks and Open Space Committee has, in fact, been different enough to warrant a new exploratory project with an RFP issued. And we believe that some of the visioning that we've done is complementary to the work that's been done in prior groups and committees. With regard to the Montessori School and the flow of traffic, the road along the top behind the elementary school on the north side of the campus can be developed as kind of a thoroughfare through to Sunset Trail. If we decide to do something like that, we really do feel strongly that a load-in, load-out area for a pavilion would be ideal right there because we're looking at connectivity between the park at the elementary school and the uplands as being one continuous kind of play area for the community. A lot of the residents weren't aware that the elementary school was available after hours for kids to play on, and there's a beautiful track that goes around the back and everything. So we're kind of looking at that as one continuous area while preserving the area closer to the street for the trees and for whatever we envision for the future for that. I just want to say, we really did listen to everyone. We did put a pool in there because we had so many council members bring up a pool. We put a quote for a pool in there. We just tried to listen to everyone and incorporate all the comments, and I think I'm really proud of the work our committee has done. So thank you, and thank you all for your volunteer time in reviewing our plans.
Thank you.
Ariel Cloud, 1038 Sunflower. I want to make sure that I acknowledge all the work the Parks and Open Space Committee did on the plan. And although I have to come up and be a naysayer on a little piece of it, I want to make sure that everybody knows that's not anything personal about the open space plan or the planning that went into it. However, I know tonight you're not planning to vote, it's not posted for a vote, but I came to this process in Sunset Valley. I've lived here for 15 years, but only got involved in city government when we found out that part of the PD building was going to be built in the PUD. And I'm sure those of you who were on the council at the time remember that long process. And I want to say thank you to those of you who are still sitting, as well as some others, who actually went through that long struggle and participated with us, and we all came out with a solution I think that we could all live with. So thank you for that. But I'm here again tonight to kind of put out that before this train gets too far out of the station, reminding people about a couple of things, specifically two proposals, the pickleball court and the soccer in the storm drainage retention pond, or drainage pond, stormwater. So I'm speaking up early again, knowing that y'all are still deliberating. Pickleball courts have been identified as a noise nuisance across the country. All you have to do is get on YouTube or on the internet, and you'll see numerous lawsuits and numerous people demanding, neighborhoods demanding that city council do noise abatement. Why is pickleball so noisy? Because it's a plastic ball with a composite paddle, so every time the ball hits the paddle or hits the court, it sounds like a popping noise, continuous popping noise, and some neighbors have likened it to hearing gunshots for 10 or 12 hours a day. So normal residential decibel levels, they start out, they, normal range between 55 and 60, and above that, then people start talking about nuisance. Pickleball is pretty much clocked in at 75 and can be above. I think people forget, because from this perspective, it looks like there's a lot of land over there. But if you walk on Sunflower Trail and go between my house at 1038 and the house next door, you will see that that storm drainage is right there. In fact, most of you live in neighborhoods here in Sunset Valley where your backdoor dexter's neighbor is much farther away from you than that storm drainage is from the neighbor behind us. Our lots are very small, and given, we bought those, we understand that. But we also bought this with an agreement, a legal agreement that the city signed, it's called a covenant, for 30 years, where it made clear that things would not be put back there except a very limited number of things. So we paid the premium. And in fact, I remember, as y'all all know, my husband over there won't sign anything until he gets a copy of the thing in the hand. That's why we actually had the contract when the last thing came, when the last thing of PD came, the PD building came around. It says, "They shall only be used for drainage or water quality facilities." That means like a storm retention pond, it does not mean a fountain, it doesn't mean those things. Water quality facilities, open space, which we have, and landscaping elements, like the berm that got put over here for the police building. Open space use also includes building and maintaining trails, walking paths, or boundary fences, not courts, not courts. So I think my issue here is, why would we disturb the wildlife that's there? Because the wildlife actually travels to that wilderness around behind the meadows, and these mesquites over here, which I know a lot of people don't care about mesquites, and they're invasive, but that's what we have. They're now over four inches. So they constitute a tree here in Sunset Valley. You can see mama deer and does all the time wandering back and forth between the meadows area and over here. And so why would we want to disturb that if we don't need to? I understand that of the first round of the survey, which is the one I kept up with, there were 144 respondents, and there were six people who identified a pickleball court as something they wanted. And I have nothing against that, but I ask you, just like I heard somebody on council say the other night, I wouldn't want that in my backyard. But keep in mind, our backyards are microscopic compared to most of the backyards in Sunset Valley. So when you talk about having something like that, you're basically having it in my living room, or my bedroom, which is, it's not going to work very well. The other piece I will say is, and the other piece I will say is, I don't want to go through this all again. I had a not-so-good introduction to city government in Sunset Valley, and we got through that, and then I even got on the Budget Committee, thank you, Rudy, and have had a good experience with that and understand more. I wish I had known more about Sunset Valley government when we had to argue with this the last time. I know more about it now. I'm very, I admire what I see, I'm very respectful of it, and I ask that council be respectful of this. I'm here for my neighbors. I don't want to do what we had to do last time, go door-to-door and get people to sign petitions and do all these things when it's very clear from a legal standpoint, we shouldn't have to be discussing this. I'm sorry, question? Oh, okay. And I don't want to get over my time, I'm sorry. Just a reminder, that area of drainage land there, it protects not just our home, mostly not our home, it protects the homes downstream. So Old Town, it protects meadows. And I suspect if we can hear pickleball on a clear day with wind, I suspect meadows will be able to hear the pickleball court too, because I do think some things can be heard that way too. There'll be a lot more that I'll have to say in the future if this continues on, because I've really been studying it. I was going to bring y'all the noise thing from a pickleball thing, but I thought, no, we're just talking. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Question? Yeah, council member?
Council Rosengard?
I wanted to ask, where, if you wanted a pickleball and you wanted a soccer field, where would you put it? Okay, so that, yeah, I get it, and no one wants it in their backyard. I actually would look at a place where we already have pretty high decibels of noise, because then you already know. And again, my apologies, because you asked me off the top of my head. One of the things that's always been an issue for me with uplands is, unfortunately, it's in the curve of the upper and lower deck of 290. And if you go out there with a decibel meter, it's going to be way above 75. So while there are many uses for that land, I get it, from the monetary to the esoteric, right? That actually is a place where a pickleball court is not really going to drive anybody crazy because it's already very noisy. I think anywhere close to any home would be a mistake. I would never say, oh, yeah, put it on the land behind meadows, or put it on the land behind so-and-so's house, because that's not respectful, and nobody wants that, right? That's my response on that. And one more thing I want to say about the soccer court in the drainage pond, actually, there's kind of a danger inherent there that you've got to get down into that. So unless the city is planning on building some kind of structure to get him down into there, you're going to be having degradation of the bank, right? Because the bank is actually built up dirt, right? And it's got grass over it. So it's really not designed for that purpose. There are flat drainage fields that they use in other places, and I am very familiar with the one on Slaughter, because that was very close to one of my schools that I used to go to weekly, and I used to that I used to go to weekly and I used to hear from the neighbors who complained about having that. And their lots are actually very big so that those storm drainage things with soccer goals inside them, they really weren't close to that. But they complained about the nuisance parking, the nuisance beer cans left over the weekend, the nuisance noise, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Next member of the public which is to speak?
Alfonso Carmona, 1038 Sunflower. I don't want to repeat a lot of things that Mrs. Cloud, she made. But the only thing that I would like to say this, eh, we have some rules. And I think that this city, eh, not because we brag, but we feel proud that we respect. And when we respect, then I tried to say, was amazing, the effort that the city was doing for impervious cover. If we start looking this kind of field, it's impervious cover. So, the minimum is 20 by 44 feet, the size. But they recommend 30 by 40. This is than they recommend. So, we don't have more impervious cover in this land. This is than we discussed so many weeks and weeks. So, was good the idea. They found 16 places and they made the survey as an open space. And in that 16 places, the only place for this was here, from that 16. And if you will see the survey, some of them, they say, has to be in a city park. They don't refer this as a park, but they refer a city park. So, when I was looking that, I think for us, first, the restricted covenant, this is tough. And, and I am a little upset because these people, the community and the committee, they were working together. And, and again, nobody can tell them, we have a covenant, we have a deed, something that we cannot do nothing. So, this is than I, I feel a little bad because if they have somebody that is the lesson between the council, the committee, and the citizens, they need to tell them what kind of obligations the city has. So, in that way, we don't fly. And the other day, when I saw that, somebody told me, oh, it's, it's simply an E icon. It, it don't mean nothing, means a lot. Because if we start with something, that will be moving and moving. And the first perception will be a reality. To build that is over $70,000, only the base, and another 70-something thousand dollars the cover. It's 140,000 dollars, minimum. Who will be playing there? So, I can see in the afternoons when a lot of people, well, not a lot of people, but people from the city of Austin is coming, they are parking, they let the dogs free, and they enjoy. But I am living here. I, I, I try to respect them between that line and ourselves, they need to use a leash. And they don't use that, they don't respect that. I used to be in another place where they used to use the, the football eh, camp from one school and was people that they weren't there. And later I saw when they started with the beers and, and they enjoy and how happy, it's good. But no, I don't want to see that. So, if in 16 places, they, they have the possibility to change that, we have to do that, but not close to the people. So, we pay $55,000 for that study. And at, at this moment, it looks like an is a, I, I am not satisfied with the study first. I, I, I am more than satisfied with the effort than everybody was doing, but not with the quality of that project. I saw in other projects, less expensive, more quality. At this moment, perhaps today, because I read that, we will vote to do something that we little by little will accomplish some of that goals. Eh, I had a discussion last week because I told them about the survey. Because I say, why do people, they don't go to Upper Cougar Creek? Well, it wasn't in the survey, so means it was bad. How you can be fair if you don't open to everybody? So, that kind of details, I know that we have one group, another group, but this is not by groups. I think that we need to continue the same way. It's a nice, then now we open and we try to be active doing something. But we need to be careful. First, respect to the people, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak at this time?
Burton Pearson, 39 Pillow Road. Just really quickly, uh, I want to say that this, this is my own citizenship opinion. I would prefer there be no development on the uplands whatsoever. I don't want a pavilion there because I think it'll be used for a few hours each week and the rest of the time, it'll be on top of what could be restored prairie. Uh, we, we don't have, pavilions are not going extinct, our prairies are. And each community needs to do their part to see to it that that degradation does not continue. Now, when we talk about respect for the uses of our land in Sunset Valley, we have to talk about respect for the actual land, the wildlife, the ecology that supports us. Nobody speaks for that. Therefore, you know, when a pickleball court or when a pavilion is brought up, there's no warblers here to speak out. There's no prairie here to speak out. We have to speak out for that. So, I prefer that that uplands be completely preserved. Certainly, the Montessori School has a wonderful opportunity there to do prairie projects and prairie learning. There's like 4% of prairie left in the United States, one of the largest ecosystems going. You learn an awful lot about the birds and everything. If you have an access trail is all you need, you could do an awful lot with that. But I don't think paving over a place and putting a pavilion there so that we can have on Saturdays a farmer's market, farmer's markets run on these tended, these square tents they bring in. I haven't seen a farmer's market yet that didn't have those square tents. And it's, we're working fine for years over there, that farmer's market. I don't think we need a pavilion for that anyway, or anything else built on that land. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak at this time? All right, council, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is, council will discuss in the following items, but we are not taking action tonight, we're not voting on anything. Um, we can make recommendations and requests to staff afterwards. Um, we're going to be talking about the Parks and Open Space Planning. If we could, from staff, give an update on, I know the AdHoc Committee met, we've also got some preliminary, you know, recommendations or recommendations coming from that group, I guess, and then also we're, we're still due a final report from Asher Robinson.
Yes. So, um, last week, the Parks and Open Space Committee did meet. They reviewed the opinion of probable cause, looking at the cost of these different items, and um, made some various recommendations on kind of how to move forward from here. And um, they did, and I think somebody mentioned this before, they did also ask Oscar Robinson for a cost on what it would cost to build a pool and they did have a pool included in that probable cause as an alternate, um, based on a small pool that was built by the city of Austin recently and the cost that was associated with building that pool. Um, going over what the committee recommended. So, the committee had a pretty, pretty long recommendation. And so, basically, the first recommendation was to set aside $125,000 for future planning on the three major nodes. And this would take things that we have at a conceptual design phase to more of a schematic design phase that would get more into the, very much the details of the spacing and like how much impervious cover and then all those calculations that would be made once something is actually kind of designed to that stage. Um, they did recommend that it would be a single kind of RFP to do all three together so that there is some uniformity and some cohesion between those three spaces. They also, and, and part of that discussion was also so that once you get to that stage, you can also then start exploring other opportunities for alternative funding sources through grants and different things like that so that you have something that you're going to take forward to some of these other organizations who do grant funding and say, okay, we've got a plan that's ready to go, the city has some money that we can match and, and we can, the city's not necessarily footing the entire bill for all of the building of everything here. Um, because these are public things that people are going to be using, there's trail grants and playground grants and all sorts of things out there that the city can then explore once we get to that stage of having a really good kind of plan to go from. And also, once we do get to that stage, having somebody come in and help with the grant writing and getting that moving. Um, one of the things that, you know, really kind of stood out in the um, plan was the idea for trail connectivity and having that kind of connectivity. So, the next recommendation they had made was for some Phase 1 kind of trail connectivity things and this includes the trail link at Sunset Valley Nature Area. There's a small trail link that will actually make it quicker for people to get from Lone Oak to the nature area or from the um, meadows to um, going to like the South Hills and Lone Oak and things of that nature. Councilmember Rosen Garden has a question.
Can we, let's look for staff to finish their presentation, then we can go to questions?
Yeah, just wanted to know, what is Sunset Valley Nature Area?
Oh, I can, so I can relate to what she's talking about. Point it down on the map. Let me see if I can. You know what? Yeah, that's it. That's the Sunset Valley Nature Area right there. And, yeah, so that's the nature area right there. It's the largest contiguous space that the city has.
Well, while we're on that question, because that was one of my questions to you, can you bring up the, the rec, the draft plan?
Yes.
And I was trying to figure out exactly where this proposed trail link was on the draft.
Yeah, it may not, it may have come out afterwards.
I don't, I don't think it was marked on the map.
Yeah, it may, may have not been in there. Sorry.
Reese's on there? The Reese Trail?
It's right here.
That's right, it was marked as already existing.
So, yeah, it may have been something that came out afterwards that we didn't do. Oh, it's this piece right here. It should, it needs to change colors. It's this little segment right here.
Okay. So, so where's the proposed trail?
This way, you can come from Lone Oak and come over this way, or you go from Curly Mesquite and come over to, come all the way around here.
You've got to go all the way around and get lost.
This way, this way you'll have a little bit quicker kind of thing, yeah. So, so it's a pretty small trail connection that we're looking at there and going ahead and doing that. And um, it doesn't have as many challenges, I think, as what we did at Reese's, um, the park this last, Valley Creek Park this last year. So, we think we can do it with about a week of American Youth Works being out there, so. So, there's that. And then also, you know, just having the wayfinding signage, the city's already kind of voted on a theme for the wayfinding signage and the street signs and all of that, going ahead and, and investing in that kind of branding of the city, but at the same time with a focus on safety and getting people to where they need to go, um, investing some money into uh, the trail signage, not only just the wayfinding signage, the new ones, but also the signage that we, you know, making new maps and stuff with QR codes that are really easy for people to use. Some things that are not necessarily high-budget items, but making sure we're thinning, I know councilmember Reech Yu had mentioned, like there's a corner that you can't see around, maybe doing some thinning and some, making sure those lines of sites around those corners so that we don't want pedestrian accident, we definitely don't want a horse accident on those, in those areas. So, so yeah, just thinning those things. And also, some of the things that we also saw a lot in those, in the um, kind of feedback was the enforcement of the rules, the leash laws, any of the trail rules, you know, bikes in places are not supposed to be and keeping people on leash, so making sure and increasing enforcement. And I know that PD with their officer now has started doing a lot more of that kind of work. So, just making sure we're increasing that and keeping up with what is happening. One of the things that um, really kind of resonated with the um...
Counselor, may I present?
I'm sorry for that interruption. I, I was looking according with the proposal for the nature area, and they have only signage and education for pollination. They are not, they are not talking about trails.
I know, that wasn't, there was, I mentioned that there was a, a couple of things we'd asked Oscar Robertson to fix and those were some of the things we're going to have him fix and those estimates of probable cause to get the final number. And so, that wasn't on there and, but we know how much it'll cost us to do that project because we know how much American Youth Works costs.
Yeah. I, I say that because if at this moment, they give it to us some estimate, 4.6 million, almost 4.7, and after that would be for a new study, that would be 125,000 and at this moment, another 12, another 50, et cetera. So, it's misleading, that number.
Yeah, and, and actually, the number, if you look at the thing that Oscar Robinson put together, they made it very clear that, that those numbers do not include any kind of design fees or anything of that nature. Those are not included in the probable cause. That is the estimate for construction only. And those numbers, like I said, there's going to be some shift in them because Valley Creek Park had a really high number in that probable cause and we're, we're taking that down, that's being ratcheted back quite a bit. So, there's going to be some shifting in there. So, and I, like I said, we're not asking for another conceptual plan, we're asking to move all the plans forward to schematic design, actually moving them forward to something that can eventually be executed on.
Yeah. They are 16. They are asking only for three and one extra. They are not looking for that eh, design for the 16. And I, I, I don't want to go, I don't want to be that way, but I would like to be eh, positive but realistic. So, I, I don't know if you spend a lot of time watching numbers. The idea is good, but if we start looking again, additional, additional, we, we need to be careful. This is than I tried to say. So, I, I love the environment and, and I like this kind of things. In this project, only for repairs, grass, et cetera, all of that, they put only 389,000 dollars, less than 10%. So, it's not all nature and nature, this project. So, we have 1.4 million dollars in water plays. So, they tried to put in some places that water splash, et cetera. So, I, I think then, we need to be careful. That's all, and this is than I tried to do.
Please continue.
Okay. So, um, the next area that was ranked really highly in um, not just the survey, but also when people came to, um, there was an activity they did for community engagement where people were given money and they could put the money where, where, where they wanted to spend it the most. And that, and, and ecological kind of restoration and stuff ranked the highest by far of any of those activities. And so, the committee really wanted to, first of all, um, this is kind of a master plan for activities and things of that nature. However, we do have an open space management plan that hasn't been updated in a number of years. And so, the committee made the recommendation that the Planning and Environmental Committee, who shepherded that, you know, back in, I think, 2005, um, review that and update it to what we need to do going forward and revising that plan. So, they wanted to make sure we're really focusing on that erosion control, the restoration with native species, invasive species control, soil conservation, as well as, you know, fire and flood mitigation, integrating all of that in to the open space management plan that dovetails with the, you know, community wildflyer plan and a couple of other plans in there so that we're doing that. And so, as councilmember, I was Mayor Porter Cornyn pointed out, there's a lot of restoration in different projects that are proposed in there. So, the committee recommended that we set aside within the venue tax fund about $400,000 for restoration projects within those green spaces and conservation areas over the next five years. And we do a lot of maintenance, we maintain fire breaks, we maintain a lot of, we maintain trails, we, we trim trees and things of that nature. But actual restoration work is something that we actually don't have, we haven't had the time or money to do. So, this would be kind of moving those things forward and enhancing and restoring some ecological function and environmental benefits to those areas over that period of time. The next section they made some recommendations on was uh, the Brody Properties. And both, basically, these are fairly similar recommendations is to make sure you guys get out there, maybe we can do a, a visit, kind of like we did with Upper Cougar Creek, but make sure we get out there and visit those properties and you guys can see them. make sure we get out there and visit those properties and you guys can see them, kind of experience them, conduct a survey. I think 6401 probably needs a survey for all of it, and also building inspections on those. And then, kind of starting from a research, is there a possibility for the city to have some kind of partnership with a nonprofit organization to use it in a way that meets kind of the, what came out, they touched about in the plan, some kind of urban farm, farm-to-market type activities that are happening there, and to create some kind of public-private partnership that benefits the city, but it doesn't necessarily cost the city a lot to make it happen. And they do a lot of those activities there that are kind of more based in those areas, like I said, farming and nature education type stuff. And 6107, same thing, visit the site, look at the structure, we need to do an asbestos survey and look at possible removal of that structure, and then kind of determine from there, do we want to go ahead and build that parking lot? How so, how will we fit it in there? And would it achieve the goals of alleviating traffic concerns on Oakdale? And finally, you know, Community Economic Development and the Arts Commission have been doing some amazing work on different arts things throughout the area. And I know they've been working on those entryway and gateway signs and all of that kind of signage, but the art in public places to continue that effort and make that happen. And so, overall, the committee's recommendations, with the $125,000 to do that schematic, moving those designs forward for those areas, and the trails and the wayfinding signage, putting together about $202,000 in kind of budgetary numbers for this next year. And what that really does is set up the city for moving those projects forward into the future, so that we can start actually building the trails and building any structures and making some kind of destination playground over at the Upper Cougar Creek area, and kind of moving it from there. So, if there's any other questions on that, I'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you. And one question I did have is that $125,000 estimate, where did that, what's the kind of basis for that, the background for that? Is that some, something that we could, you know, get for that amount, you have that much money, or would it, is that something we'd have to go out and?
We would have to put in RFP, and so this would be a different kind of thing where we would be asking for professional services, so it'd probably be, we'd have a proposal, and we'd have kind of a, an estimated cost, and we would hope that we could do it for that amount. The idea was, we've spent X number of dollars on those conceptual plans, and so they're not starting from scratch, all the information is there. So we were thinking that that number, somewhere around that number would be a good number to actually start getting that more schematic design, where we're getting, you know, actually, here's, here's how we're gonna build the trail, and those things that are laid out actually that gets us closer to construction of something.
And by, and by the conceptual plans, you're talking about the two that we commissioned for Upper Cougar Creek?
The two that we've commissioned. So we have one for the Uplands, and we have one for Upper Cougar Creek. And so they have a lot of that information already there, although the plan is, the plans for both areas are fairly, a little simpler, I think, that the Parks and Open Space Committee has done. We don't have one for City Hall, but the space is much smaller here, too. It's not a huge, we're not talking about a huge amount of acreage behind City Hall that we would be incorporating into that plan. So I think they felt like that would be a good number, that that would be a good estimate for that project.
Thank you. So before we go to questions, so one, I just want to give my kind of input into this process to you. This is, one of the things that we tried to do is coincide the output and the review from the Open Space Ad Hoc Committee, as well as our consultant, to coincide with our budgets. So we have an opportunity, if we want to, to amend our proposed budget to include some planning items. I think that, we've heard from many residents about, there are probably some areas where it, you know, there's, there's, it continues to be additional feedback, and we've always had this, you know, the Uplands, you know, the City Hall facilities, the areas of, you know, and we just heard from Austin Montessori about, you know, the, the kind of intersection of how that space between the School of Austin Montessori and AST where Reese Trail, or Race Drive, I guess, Reese Trail, Reese Drive?
I guess it's Trail.
Or, you know, where, but we've also had an ad hoc committee being, you know, participating in this thing and giving a lot of input into this process, especially with regards to what I'd say are very low-impact improvements that we could proceed with while we're continuing to plan and move forward on these other items, if we want to continue to go and, and get more input. Things like the signage and the maps and trail connections, Upper Cougar Creek being an opportunity for us to, we walk that space, and everybody agreed that it'd be great if we had a walking, you know, educational interactivity there. So, this is an opportunity for council, for you to ask questions for staff, for us to get your input, for you to, if there's things you want to bring back or make recommendations that you would like to see as part of where we're going in our, our next meetings as far as budget cycle. Again, we're not taking action tonight, but, you know, let's go forward with council questions, council input, so we can, you know, continue to make progress on this, because I think everybody agrees that there's a lot of good in this plan that we want to capture and continue to move forward with. We'll start with Councilmember Rosen Garden, and then Councilmember Reitz.
I have a number of questions. So, first off, how much have we spent so far on all of this? From what I remember, we spent $50,000 for Upper Cougar Creek design, we spent $50,000, 30? $30,000 for Upper Cougar Creek, we spent $50,000 for Uplands?
No, 34,500.
34,500 for Upland. We spend how much on other projects, all relating to parks and open space?
This, this project was 55,000 for the?
It'll be 50.
It'll be 50, okay.
So far, I don't have the August numbers, but we've spent about 40 so far, so.
We already spent close to 120. And then I wanted to ask Bert Pearson if I might, if you don't mind. If you had your druthers on parks and open space planning, would you put prairie grass on all of them?
I would pretty much take anywhere that looks a little bit like a prairie at this point, and go ahead and completely convert that to a conservation area, yes, I would. And I think the reason for that is, is that it is ultimately going to increase property values tremendously in Sunset Valley. I think the people who are coming to Austin now are people who are highly educated, they're working in highly technical fields, they have tremendously ecological houses that they can choose from, and when they think about where they want to buy a home. And I think they're gonna be looking for things like dark skies, green space, preserve prairies, and just really an ecological place to live in an area where the ecology is rapidly being degraded by development. And so I think that, living in Sunset Valley, if we can make this a community, a model community, where people can come and be close to nature, when normally the houses are right on top of each other, right? Our property values are gonna go through the roof, whereas these other areas that are so degraded are not gonna be there. Nobody wants to buy a lot that's looking at the back end of a 7-Eleven. And if you look at real estate ads, they all feature and say, "Green space, close to trees, close to nature, close to the views of nature." It's all nature that makes the value. And when it comes to your economy, we certainly understand, right, that it's ecology first, because when the ecology goes, you lose your, you lose your economy. Look at, after Katrina, what happened to New Orleans economically? So when the flooding starts here in Sunset Valley, and it will eventually, because of climate change, you're gonna want every ounce of that sponge prairie you can possibly get to protect people. And people will recognize that and know that when they begin to think about buying property of where they really want to live. So I think there's tremendous benefits to taking care of prairie, particularly as a sponge, if nothing else, just to soak up the water, when it really, I think we're gonna go to a period where we have incredibly dry summers, and then a monsoon fall, where the rain's just gonna come like you can't imagine. So I do think we're gonna, we really, I think in terms of just really looking to the future, the future is going to be to a, see, the other thing, too, if you want to attract money to your shops, you gotta have people that have good jobs and good educations. Right now, you know, we have Academy surplus over there. They're selling AR-15s to 18-year-olds within walking distance of Sunset Valley Elementary. That's gonna hurt us. That's gonna hurt us. You know, now Dick's Sporting Goods doesn't sell AR-15s to anybody under 21. So when you bring in, when you're trying to attract sharper people to make a better community, people that are aware of things, you know, you've gotta have stuff that they're aware of, and they're aware of ecology and how well it's taken care of.
And, and just to clarify, you're talking about prairie grass that is not mowed or mowed?
I'm talking about, really, a natural restored prairie. We don't generally mow those, no, we don't generally mow those. Now, there are ways to, you know, for fire mitigation and take care of all that kind of problem. But basically, what it is, it's a prairie, is basically clump grasses, native grasses with, which then leaves open ground space between them for forbs, which are all the blooming plants to be. And you basically just have something blooming nine months out of the year, incredible beauty, not to mention the nature that that attracts and keeps for you. And you're not having to go out and replant those flowers, because they do, they take care of themselves. So it's just pure beauty that's basically for free. So that's, and a tremendous, look, look it up in terms of the flood mitigation of prairie, it's unbelievable how much water it soaks up, you know.
Thank you.
That's right, you bet. Thank you.
Councilmember Rosen Garden, do you have additional questions? Okay. Councilmember Reitz, and then Councilmember Johnson.
Okay. One, I want to address the pickleball courts. So pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the nation, and I am the one who highlighted that, yes, it is a very noisy sport, and we do need to be very cognizant of it. Ms. Versace over here did send me a link to a, some noise barriers that can be put around a pickleball court. There is, that can be made available, that people can view it, because you can actually hear it, you can hear the pickleball court going on, and then you can, you, the camera walks outside the court, and then you can hear it from there. And so it does, it's an amazing difference in noise. So, that being said, it's, it's, it's very, it's, it is an amazing difference. And so it's worth, so if we were to do pickleball courts anywhere, I would suggest we put those noise barriers around them, and a roof, and all of that would contain that noise. The second thing I want to, I would like the committee to consider, if they're gonna meet again, or the councils to consider, is the location of the pickleball courts. I think we should look at 6107, I've got the writer's address, Brody. One, it is next to a road that's very loud, it's got an existing house that has to be torn down, it'll have a slab already there, perhaps we could already utilize that, I don't know the size of it or anything. We, the plan called for some parking for access to the trails, that could be parking for the pickleball, it could be, and if you have it all enclosed and everything, it wouldn't, you know, you're far away from any neighbor, there's a lot of vegetation that surrounds that lot, and it's a good use of that lot. That is floodland, and so it, if it floods, no big deal, you just clean it up and play again. So, that could work. Now, I'd like to talk about this whole, and that would really eliminate that whole node of the City Hall node, if, unless we decide to do a pool. The estimates for the cost at almost $3 million just sort of, you know, kind of blew me away a little bit. I don't know how accurate that is, but...
That's the cost that they, it cost Austin to build the Go Valley Pool.
Yeah, and that sounds like it's a really big, great pool, or is it just a small?
I can show you a picture. It's a six, it's a modest size, it's about six laps, and then a small waiting pool next to it. I can bring a picture up.
So it's not a huge pool. So that's, that is a huge amount of dollars, and, so that's, that was very disappointing to hear the dollar amount, and I understand the, the fact that you, the ongoing maintenance and the hiring of employees that would be involved, that's a whole thing that really requires a lot of thinking about, if, if this community really wants to do that. You know, don't tell my husband, my husband wants that community pool, but, but, you know, I have to look at the city as resource-wise, that is a lot of money. And so I do, I put that out as a option that really deserves a lot more study. So if, if we determine that that's not what we wanted to do, then that node, that whole node goes away, really. You could put a little playground there, you can beef it up, and there's already plans out there to do that, with, that don't, that it doesn't cost a lot of money. And so if you can move the pickleball courts there, and then, then you have the other two nodes of the Uplands and the Upper Cougar Creek.
It's important for people to be able to appreciate the prairie and get to see it up close, because I think then they, they appreciate it more, you know. So you want to keep that to a minimum, but then, and you know, and do it something where it's like crushed granite or something, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, that, you know, and, and then the problem, of course, is to keep people on the trail.
Yes.
And not running into the wildfires with their dog to take a picture. Yeah.
They're what's real pretty, when they watch it in the middle of blue eyes.
We might say, "Watch out for snakes" or something. So, given that, then I think, one, two easy ways to start is just some perimeter trails at the Uplands and a perimeter trail at Upper Cougar Creek. That way, that would start opening up that property, and it would give our residents that option to, to start really utilizing those properties more. I'm not convinced about a farmer's market pavilion. I happen to like white tents, I think they're nostalgic feeling, and I, I don't necessarily think a pavilion is gonna add anything to it. And we're not Mueller Farmer's Market, we don't have 13,000 people living in one little tiny area, so it's really hard to say, we're not really apples to apples when you compare the two. And given that, so I would like us to consider, in the budget, to go ahead and put in for trails, you know, perimeter trails of those two areas, and get them done this year. And let's start using that, and let's open it up to our residents, and then let's see if a lot of our residents, and if it, if our shopping area starts developing in that area. So, I'm not real interested in doing an RFQ for more planning. We planned a lot, those plans sit on, on a shelf somewhere and gather dust. And I understand that, and people say, "Let's plan because we can't make decisions." I say, "Let's make decisions." And it's time to start making decisions. We've been talking about things for a long, long time, so we need to start making some decisions. I don't know exactly where the Montessori connection would be. If somebody could point that out on a map, that would be really helpful. Is the Montessori School in Sunset Valley? That is in the city of Austin?
Yeah, the Montessori School's over here. This is the Reese Road kind of connection that we were looking at, it's like a trail that would come up toward the Uplands. And one of the comments that we made to Oscar Robinson was to kind of move, shift the trail to one of the edges of the property, in case in the future the city ever needed to do road or anything like that, to have it more, not centered in the middle where it's taking up the entire space.
So it just goes?
So between?
The school.
Sunset Valley Elementary and between, and Austin Montessori, there is a strip of land which was, it's a, it's a, it's a city-owned land, but it was Reese Drive extension, and it's between the elementary school and the Montessori School on the other side. So right now, it's, it's got tracks on it, you know, because there's been some, some driving there, but, you know, long ago, it was gonna be a road, right?
Yes. And, and so you can see, so you can see this green strip here, technically it extends all the way up to, it's actually the other end of Sunset Trail. So it, this little piece right here along the Uplands, we consider it part of the Uplands, but it's actually a right-of-way for that road, Reese Road, that goes all the way up. And this is Stadium Drive right here, this is another piece of right-of-way.
So that's that little area that is just right behind the school there?
Yes, behind, between the school and the Uplands.
Okay, okay. I don't have children in the elementary school, so I'm not there during elementary times, I avoid that area. But is there a better utilization for traffic using that space at all?
So, one of the things the committee discussed was... So one of the things the committee discussed was, like I said, moving the trail to like the right side, what would be the right side of the screen here. In case, what AISD is doing is they're flipping a lot of their schools when they rebuild them. So the school may eventually end up back here versus here. And at that point, there may be a question of, you know, mobility around the school. But at this point, a lot of AISD's plans are kind of on hold because of COVID and things that have happened. So there's just no timeline on that. So that's why we were, you know, thinking ahead, but not necessarily building a road either, so.
Okay, so how, how much, so this is just a conceptual idea? And where would y'all want, if you had access, how would y'all want it to be? Because I know we have a number of residents that are, their children go there.
Yes, so the entire, the long end of that schematic right there, that's essentially the long end of the rectangle of our campus, okay? Can I just point at that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, from our perspective, and this is, again, this has just been conceptual talk. We don't even have the designs yet. So we have a campus that essentially runs this entire rectangle, this being underdeveloped Reese Road, and this being undeveloped Stadium Drive. Right now, the way that our campus layout is and our arrival and departure traffic flow goes, all of our choo, all of our cars pull down Sunset Trail over here. Children are released, and going out into Jones Road is our only sort of spillway, if you will, for the majority of our traffic. We have a few classrooms on this side that have a nice pull-in lane, that's just fine. And our, our talking and our two considerations, just to bring you into sort of our design and thinking, would be that if we could somehow reimagine our campus where the majority of our traffic coming in could have an artery out that wasn't Jones Road. And it's not feasible for it to be Sunset Trail, because we're on this side of Sunset Trail, right? That would be a huge relief to the traffic flow and safety situation. So one idea, again, just in the idea cloud, as it were, would be to have towards this end of campus, an artery that connects here to route our traffic out that way. The other piece that I was talking about earlier was having sort of first responder and fire access. That would alleviate some of that too. And Dawn, my colleague, can speak more to this than I can. You can actually create what would be considered, still be considered a green space or natural trail, but have it designed just so it's got firm enough path. Dawn, is that correct? The fire trucks can still have access to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that, that does. And so I guess my recommendation is, before we allocate any funds to this, that maybe there's some planning that goes along with the school and, and go through. Because alleviating some of the traffic on Jones is, would probably be very beneficial, you know, I would think. I, I'm not there a lot, but that's what I would think. So I do like the idea, if, if children are walking that route to school, but it, you know. So, so it, what I'm suggesting is for that little piece, maybe a little more planning to go on with that, so. And, and that's the main thing I have. So it's the pickleball courts to 6107. Eliminate the, the community, or the city hall node, and then allocate funds and get the, get the trails built for Upper Cougar Creek and for the Uplands. Some extra, you know, perimeter type things, so you could still have some prairie. It's, it can still be utilized, and then, until we determine more of how those areas can be. Thank you.
Councilor Johnson, and then Councilor Rosenkern.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start kind of on, in the same area, so we don't have to move around. Although it looks like we already moved.
Where do you want to go? Sorry.
That's all good. So, living across from the Montessori right there, and I live on Reese. I'm, I'm super against the road, but, but, I mean, but again, like, like Ariel said, it's just like, this is what we're doing. This is like the open conversation, so, you know.
The road from behind the school that goes out that way?
If, if you go all the way down this way, like...
You're gonna get to that way?
Yeah, like I'm directly across the street.
What about if they exit that way?
Well...
Where are they going after they exit here?
So, I, I, I've, Chief is here now, and so we, we've talked about, there, there's a, there's a barrier at the end of Master Sergeant Bob Horgan, and that, we, we had that open when that was a COVID testing site and a, and a vaccine. And it was pretty great. Like, we, down on our side of Sunset Valley, we didn't even know traffic was going on, because it was like flowing so well. I, I, I don't want, I don't know who has been like working on the, on like the traffic flow over there. We, I mean, we see it, and now we just deal with it. But it's kind of funny, like, we have almost unlimited parking and roads on three sides, and we still can't get a ri... I, I don't want to say that we need some more clear thinking, but I like Chief's idea of like, in the morning and at the end of the day, you just have an officer go down, pop open the, he probably has a like clear mental picture of this. But just open them up so that people can kind of exit that way and get them out onto 290. I'm sure people would love that. There are people that currently like go down Bob Horgan and then snake their way through, and then get onto 290 over closer to 4715. That wasn't my main point, actually, but, which was, oh, also, you can get, you can get federal funds to build a road, but then maintaining that is all on us. And for a road that's like, you know, I say, we're like, we're neighbors, we're partners, et cetera, et cetera. But when, when it comes due to like, put money into the road, that's when all of a sudden everyone disappears. So, like, that will be on us to maintain. So I, I think there's a way that we can, again, there's like, the, the plans aren't even, it, like, nothing's written down yet, and, and for us as well. So we, we have, we have time. I'd be more inclined to connect that as a, as a trail in, in both areas. The, like you were saying, I, I'm, in my work, like what I do, I always like to mix in some longer-term goals with some short-term goals and some medium-term goals. You know, because sometimes you're working on stuff, and people are like, what's he doing? And so it's nice to like kind of sprinkle some, some easy wins around there. I think building some trails, like you mentioned, are great short-term wins. You know, we can, I don't even know how much planning needs to be involved. I know our, I know Freeland Turk helped with the planning of Valley Creek Park.
Yes.
Was I about to say something?
No, they, they would, we would have to have them engineered, because we would have to, since we're building granite gravel trails, we're going to have to go through probably a TCEQ permit to do that. These are kind of undisturbed areas. We could see if we could get an exception. It just depends on what we're, what we end up building. But yes, they would have to be involved. We would have to get some plans for that.
Okay. I, again, like, if a road ever goes there, I hope not, but whatever. It would be so far off in the future that I think putting a trail there, I mean, it's, when Burton talks about putting, getting the, the prairie back, I, I think that section is never going to be prairie. I mean, it's like too small, and I actually have some questions for you in a sec. So like trails there, getting some trees in there, and just can, just connecting it closer to the Uplands is one of those short-term, short wins that we can really get. I want to point out one thing. The, the money that was spent on the Uplands, the, the planning, how much money was, was spent on the Uplands?
Thirty-four five.
Thirty-four five, and what was one of the biggest ticket items in there?
Biggest ticket item in that plan was probably the pavilion.
No, 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 sorry. The, the money that we've already spent on the Uplands. It was a study to see how much money we could get for it. So while that money was spent on the Uplands, I mean, that was...
The appraisal.
The appraisal.
Ten thousand.
It was $10,000. Like, I don't know. I, I, I want to, I want to pull that money out of the idea that that went towards like park planning. So next up is, questions for Burton, please. What, what would be the minimum size area that you would ever consider for prairie restoration? That, that section is only so far wide, it's nice and long.
Yeah, I know. And, and really, basically, we're at a position now where, you know, people who are interested in prairie restoration are encouraging people to take and just make a small percenter area in their yard.
Yeah.
Just so we can, just so we can keep some of the species around. So any size right now is extremely helpful.
Okay. Yeah, I, I feel, in, even people's yards, I've seen the signs that are just like, this is like... Native habitat, so...
Yeah, that's sort of a general way to approach this. But, but really, what we really need is actual, you know, prairie species, anywhere we can get them. I mean, that area out in front of Sunset Valley Elementary that they just mow right there, if that could go back to Tall Grass Prairie, it would be cool for the school. It would be great for everything. So any, any size is good that we can get.
I'm about to, and Lisa just left, and she would have a view on this. We're about to potentially plant a bunch of trees in October for a planting event. I'm from the Northeast, so like when you say like, put, you know, put nature back, I just think trees, but maybe...
Yeah, it's actually, right now, the, the most rapidly degrading habitat in the United States, we only have 4% of it left, is Tall Grass Prairie.
So, go ahead.
So they're already in the budget for next year in the venue tax. There's $15,000. I think it's listed as a planning environmental initiative, $15,000 toward a prairie restoration project. That's in the FY23 proposed budget. And that would, our original thoughts was to put it either at Indian Grass Prairie Preserve or the Manley Track, to start there.
Okay, so we should keep doing what we're gonna do?
What was that?
We should keep doing what we're gonna do?
Yes, no, that, they're separate projects.
Well, I mean...
Yeah, and, and we're, we're doing kind of more perimeter and kind of some foresting and stuff like that. And there are going to be plenty of prairie around there still.
Okay. The, sorry, the, the, what was it called? The, for the Uplands, the appraisal. That, that wasn't meant to be like against or anything. It's good to know, but, you know, it wasn't so much for planning.
It's not very native in place.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. Yeah, so I, I guess the takeaway is just, let's start getting some, some money spent on some trails and stuff. And that's what I'd be into. Thank you.
I saw Councilor Rosenkern, and then Mayor Protam. And then just as a reminder, council, we are going to close the work session before our regular council meeting starts at 6:00. And then I'll try to summarize some of the direction of the staff. So go ahead, and Councilor Rosenkern.
So the first thing I wanted to ask Council Reitz, when you talk about trails on the Uplands, I don't know if you realize, there's already trails there.
You know, there are some, there are some trails, and maybe that's sufficient.
That's all we need, yeah.
Maybe that's sufficient. I mean...
There's something that we could do to signage and wayfinding, and, you know, maybe even having like a master sort of, you know, like if you bring up a map saying you can go up to the Uplands and walk the trails there. It's really kind of hidden right now, right?
Yeah, it is, yes.
And it is like prairie land. So you walk around Tall Grass throughout the area. So I say, leaving it the way it is. So it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, is number one, we need to work on $400,000 for restoration projects. Take care of what we have first to make sure that we're working on flood mitigation, wildfire mitigation, making sure that there's site visibility, because yes, I agree with that one. And then it sounds like doing minor things like trails on Upper Cougar Creek, and also what Rob showed us, Sunset Valley Nature Area Trail Link, $12,000. I think we're in sync with those items right now.
So how much was that one?
Which one?
This, the Nature Valley Trail?
That one's really, we, we'll do that with American Youth Works, it's about $12,000. That one's...
So that's a no-brainer, yeah.
That's, that one's a super simple one. The Upper Cougar Creek, I mean, I'm assuming that on this one, we would be looking at an improved surface trail, because we're connecting through shopping center and different things like that. So that's going to be, you know, more expensive. Obviously, it's not just $12,000 to do that. And so I, let me pull up and see what the cost estimates were.
It's an ADA accessible nature trail loop for $222,000.
Is that accurate?
Why can't we just create trails by people walking on the same path time and time again, and then you got a trail?
Well, I think if you're going to be, you know, looking at some of these areas for the future, you're going to have some, especially through there, where you're connecting like La Madeline to that, and you're going to have, if you build, if you ever build a playground, you're going to need ADA trails there.
Yeah.
So, so, and I'll double-check, I mean, I think in here it's saying, well, which there likely would be some concrete at low-water crossings at some point, but it would be a stabilized granite trail for the most part. So, but I believe that that 200 and something thousand dollars was the estimate, planning environmental, pretty close to it, I had thought about originally as well, so.
Okay.
So I think that is, that is a possibility. And, and the Uplands does have some, the Uplands, being that it's the Uplands, and it's very relatively flat compared to Upper Cougar Creek, it doesn't have the, you know, slope issues that we would have there. So having just a walking trail at this point in time would probably, you know, at least in getting some signage and getting more people out there and stuff, so.
Go ahead.
Before I give up the floor. And Chief, we talked about having the school buses go behind the elementary school and using the road of Upper Reese Drive as their road versus having a walking path with a bunch of trees, which would be in the way of a future road. Whatever happened with that?
It never came back up, but from a public safety perspective, yeah. A one-way northbound up Reese that exits onto Master Sergeant Horgan, it allevi, it eliminates some of that traffic on Jones, and especially Jones and Sunset Trail, where the Montessori School and the Sunset Valley Elementary traffic meet there. That, it's a pretty hazardous intersection. You've got cars exiting Sunset Trail and going east and west, and there's a blind lane there that they're having to pass through there. We've even considered, you know, paying or working with the school to pay for an officer to stand out there. But even for that, when I went out and looked at it, it, that's probably too dangerous for a police officer to be out there every day. It's, it's, it's a pretty bad intersection out there. So at some point, whether we do it now or later, that's going to be, from a public safety perspective, that's the answer to that problem. It solves what is a pretty dangerous issue.
And I would just add to that, there's enough space in that right-of-way, especially as Chief was talking about, making it one-way, where people kind of go up Jones and go around, and then they could still come out through the, through, through the Montessori School. There's enough space there to do that and have a trail and a path and trees along that trail, kind of thing. So there's enough space for both.
Yeah, maybe Public Safety Committee could revisit that. I mean, it sounds like it's a pretty dangerous situation, and, you know.
We need to get that on the agenda.
Okay, Councilor Rosenkern, I want to make sure the Mayor Protam has his questions, and then we'll go ahead and close out the workshop. Mayor Protam?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at this moment, we assume that this is the conceptual plan. Yeah, members of the council?
I don't think that's the conceptual plan. It's...
It's a draft.
It's a draft of the conceptual...
It's a draft, it's a draft plan. I mean, there's still some changes that can be made to that plan, yes.
Okay, so from these, I, I think then, now, after discussion, I appreciate that view from Member Reitz about the 60, 6107 Brody. Then the boffers, they are far, far than we have here. And I like that. I, I support that about the pickleball. And the football, forget it. In the, in the storm drainage. So for the schematic design...
We call it soccer.
Soccer. Okay, for the schematic design, so we have to approve that? The $125,000?
No, we're not approving anything tonight, anything that if we, it doesn't sound like support for doing, going forward with an RFQ. At least I haven't heard a consensus among council. So before we even issued an RP, we would have to come back to council to vote on to be issued. And we have not given direction to staff to craft the RFQ yet, or RFP.
Okay. The plan would need to be adopted first by council. So this is the draft plan that the committee has sent you. And now you all are discussing to finish the plan. So then when the plan is finished, then it can move forward to dis... so then when the plan is finished, then it can move forward to design where then you, council would issue an RFP, you know, possibly for, you know, the two or three nodes, whatever, whatever the plan, you know, the final plan has.
So, all of these, uh, notes that they have, one was the, the committee recommend allocation, all of that is a recommendation, so for us, we will have additional discussions with all of these subjects, this is my, this is that I would like to understand.
Yes, well, what I, what I was gonna recommend and how we proceed is that there are certain items that I would consider similar to what we've done in the past, parking lot items for us to consider moving into this year's budget, and what I heard, for example, was the Sunset Valley Nature Area Trail Link would be one of those items that it's a discrete cost, it's not part of the one hundred and twenty-five thousand, we could move that into the budget while we continue our discussions on these other items, and there's a number of those that I was gonna list out, just, but the, the overall plan is gonna take further discussion, and especially how we want to proceed with any, bringing any outside design firms.
So in the same way, about the four hundred thousand dollars for the venue fund is one recommendation that they provide, huh? Yeah, well, I, I, I think that, for me, it's important to, to know that because today is the third meeting that we have, so I, I think that we need to have a little more, be familiar with these, and be talking with other people, and most of this information is, is fresh for us, or for me, so, uh, I appreciate that and don't feel the, the committee that I am negative, I try to be realistic, and, and that is different, so, i- in that case, if I try to look the money, allocate one point four million dollars, one point four million dollars is a lot of money, only in play areas, play areas, so, they, they will put in Upper Cougar Creek four hundred thousand, Uplands two hundred and fifty, Ballet Creek two fifty, and sixty-one oh seven Brody two fifty, so it's one point four million dollars. In addition of this, they charge twenty-five percent, that will be a part of the contingency, so, it's not my money, it's the money of the citizens, and I, I, we have that responsibility, and we need to be careful. The idea, we need to go there, and again, still, we are talking about nature, nature, trees, et cetera, they will spend, they propose only three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, so, so the proposal, in my opinion, is still lack, that we need to do a little more with trees and with other kind of things, so this is that I try to say, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, so staff, what I'm proposing is that I'll provide a list of items to bring back for consideration at our budget adoption, um, so that's, like we've done in the years past, we've always had parking lot items that we can choose to bring into the budget and vote on them, you know, one by one or as a group. Um, what I've heard is that there's, uh, you know, a consideration for doing something on Upper Cougar Creek, you know, so that's, that's a possibility, the trail connection for Sunset Valley Nature Area, trail signage and, and upgrades is another discrete item, I think that's a part, you know, from the, the design, um, so those, those, those items, I'll bring a list back, you know, to staff and have them being brought back as our, as part of our budget consideration. For the larger, what do we do with the nodes, what do we do with the, you know, the input that, you know, for where things like amenities, and if we go forward to the amenities like pickleball courts or, um, things like that, that is gonna be a larger discussion, I think we don't have time to do that as part of our current budget process, but it needs to be an ongoing project for council, so. All right, with that, I appreciate everybody's, uh, work on this, I really appreciate the Ad-Hoc Committee's work and, and the, uh, and the input that the residents have also provided, I appreciate everybody who's came out, uh, to give their input tonight as well, um, and thank you all for, uh, for attending the work session. We're gonna close the work session at six oh two PM, and council, um, do we need a quick break before we get into our, our council meeting? Okay, so we're gonna take a, a couple minute break before we formally start our council meeting, so we're gonna close the work session at six oh two PM, we're gonna start council at six oh five PM or thereabouts. So.
All right, the time is 6:15 PM. I'm going to call to order a that went a little bit long. I want to make sure everybody had a break between meetings. So Council, just as a note, we Sylvia is, she's remote today. We're having some technical issues, I think, getting our Zoom links and everything working. So we're going to try to have her be available by phone or by audio when we get to the budget items, you know, once we get to that point, so that we make sure that she can answer or address any questions coming up from Council. With that, I will begin with our citizen public communication that we did, and starting with the one resident we had sign up, and then anybody else who can, who wishes to speak at this time.
My microphone work, or do I make my microphone work?
You can start over.
Okay, thank you. I'm very much concerned. I love Sylvia Corillo. I really do. I'm going to miss her. I love Alfonso over here. He's a great, great neighbor, and what a wonderful support member for Sunset Valley. My neighbor Charles Goyet, y'all isolated him the entire time he was up here trying to become part of Council. A lot of you have been here a long, long time, and you should offer your seat to other people. You know, there's just so many things. You only give four minutes, and you give somebody 18 years of stress. But, I mean, Rose, Sylvia, Alfonso, Charles, you know, wow. So those are the people I love. And when I'm up here at the microphone, there's, you know, there's somebody in the community that always takes aim at me. And I was, last time I was first talking about being a Christian, and the fact that I do love people, no matter if they're, what color, religion they may be. But when I have a neighbor that has to stand behind me, and she wants to, you know, I talked about being a Christian. I talked about giving you my house, okay? The state of Texas, I talked about all of that with you. Talked about being a single, white, adult male, that the fact that I built that house myself, and I'm not quite proud of it. And, well, you know, she got up here, and she wanted to talk about her splash pad, and how ridiculous I think that is, because I'm a grown man, and I grew up in Sunset Valley. My brothers forged these trails, made every one of them. We didn't design them, we just were out there making them. So when you want to spend money on a swimming pool, I say that's ridiculous. I grew up here without one. Just got a really nice pool up the road. Splash pads, could you imagine a grown man? What about an adult hour for the pool? What do we have to listen to the kids? I don't want to hear your kids, okay? I grew up here, it's going to be okay. Your kids will grow up, they'll be all right. So against your open space, why don't you build a frog pond over here for the kids? Great big pond for geese. You know how many geese, and ducks, and fish? I've had alligators in my pond. I've had everything in my pond, because it was a fun experience. And I'm an adult, 55 years old. I love everybody in this community. I want to say thank you to the police department over the years. I don't know, you know, wouldn't want to introduce myself to a sheriff anywhere else, you know, in fear of, I finally got to know the liberal, I like you just fine. You work for me the way I like you working for me. You will protect me. I enjoy this. And I want to meet the sheriff in some Potent County, someplace else. Okay, so I'm not going anywhere. Sad about Sylvia leaving. I brought flowers to Ms. Barbara Wilson, okay? Last Friday, just to tell everybody how much I love you, and you better believe it. I've had post-traumatic stress for 18 years. It started with Sean Rhyma Talk Radio Show, when I hung some American flags on the four-way utility poles. My mother flew 2,000 miles from the state of Maine to visit on Memorial Day. She told me to take them down. I also said, but hell, high water, I'm taking them down. That gets my tone, my heart, it's about to stop. Could have a stroke standing here. I do love your community, but I want to thank you for the support you've offered me in the years. You put a little check mark. The council said no to Master Sergeant Horgan Trail for seven years, till I said, please, community members, would you pay attention to what I'm trying to do? And they passed it for me. So maybe the community needs to move in, and y'all need to move out. Because, you know, you're moving people out. There's a lot of neighbors that are packing it up right now. Thank you for your time. My four minutes is up. I imagine it'll be something I'll come back to talk to you about in the future. Love you, Alfonso.
Thank you. And Roger, and then Lisa, are the other people that signed up. I had to got two more notes, so I think Roger's first, and then Lisa also signed up. And then we'll go to the rest of the folks.
Thanks. I'm Roger Edmondson. I live at 744 Oakdale Drive. I was a member of the Parks and Open Space Committee that met. This is the third committee, or ad hoc committee, I've been on in the last three, four years. It was the most effective process that I've been involved with during my 46 years of residency here in Sunset Valley. And so kudos to everybody on there. There were pointed disagreements. There was respectful discussion. There was courageous decisions made to forego things that obviously had some degree of support, but were environmentally or fiscally irresponsible in the minds of the committee. And so I think we brought forth a great plan. It moves centers of attention over by the shopping centers to draw lots of people in from the surrounding communities, so that the shopping centers can take advantage of that. I think it has a lot to touch on, the open and green spaces around Sunset Valley, which I think is important. And I thought it was just a great process. I too will probably miss Sylvia, just because I felt like, for the first time, at least in my experience, we had a very professional, experienced city manager or city administrator at the helm, and city administrators are never popular. They're either with the residents, or most times with the council. It's a tough position to be in, but I thought that her experience and her leadership was very effective. And so I hope that the council will take that into account as they go through the search for a new one, to try to somebody, find somebody of equal experience and capabilities and knowledge. I think that's all I had tonight. But just that, that plan that you have in front of you is a very, very well-done plan, and very well-thought-out, and I think will benefit Sunset Valley. Don't think about just who's going to see the sign on the trail. Think about all the people that will be, and where we place the center of attention. One last thing, and I think this was a surprise to everybody, but the use of the uplands that's in that plan is, is one that I support. That's a very valuable piece of property. That discussion's been going on. But to use that piece of property, that valuable piece of property, in a way that's not valuable to the city as a whole, would be irresponsible. So I think that the committee came up with a great plan to put that farmer's market there, and to draw people in there, and use it to generate goodwill and revenues for the city. Thanks.
Thank you. And then Lisa, and then we'll take people who are waiting to speak.
Oh, it got turned off again? Why? Just leave it on. Okay, I'm not going to touch it. Lisa Versace, Pillow Road. Thank you, Roger. It was great having you in the group. I just want to say, the pickleball court behind City Hall totally understand the concerns. We did research the decibel levels, and we found a great product that reduces it by 50% without a shade structure over the top. So when you include the shade structure over the top, it's like practically nothing, like 20 decibels, and not going to be an issue. I have no issues moving it to the uplands, or to other properties. It's very easy to think that you can just kind of look at everything, and like, take a look at the whole plan, and be like, oh, we're going to do this, this, and this, and boom, that's it. But we really did put a lot of time and effort in thinking about each and every recommendation that we made. We made sure that we had support on multiple levels, be it separate committees, or based on the results of the survey. I forgot the other thing that I was going to say. Oh, the soccer nets. Big deal, remove those. It's not a real soccer field, it's just a soccer net for maybe some toddlers to kick around a ball. Remove it. It doesn't, I'm not connected to anything personally, I just think that we did a really great job as a committee, and I just want to stick up for the work we've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Barbara Wilson, 33 Pillow Road. Tonight, I want to take a sidestep and recognize one of our staff members. Sometimes during stressful times, and critical times, and elections, and budgets, and disagreements on various insundrious issues and the future plans, we forget what certain people have given to this city. In the last month, Matt has taken on not only his job, but city secretary, court reporter, the court clerk, he's training Melissa full-time, plus doing his assistant city administrator position. And as Sylvia has been out with her injury, he has stepped up and met the challenge. He has put in tons of extra hours. He is a credit to us as a community, to you as a council, and to us as an organization. And I would like y'all to help me give him a round of applause. Thank you, Council.
And thank you, Matt, for everything that you do. Appreciate it.
Where am I going? Thank you. Helen Bessie, 795 Oakdale Drive. That was a hard talk to follow, but I agree. And Matt, thank you so much for all you do. I just wanted to thank the council for considering doing this plan in pieces, rather than taking one node, and then just pouring all your money into it and making it happen. I think having the, doing, working on all the areas carefully and slowly is a good idea, so that we can see how things unfold as we move along, both budget-wise and interest-wise. So thanks very much for that, if that's what happens. Also, I did want to say that we talked a lot, and I do support the tall grass prairies. But I think most of you know that my concern right now is, is fire safety, and I really, really, really want to keep doing the fire mitigation, and also getting back our habitat and erosion control on our hillsides, so that we can start having vegetation again. Everything that I read about, and having friends in Colorado where the fire almost came down to our cabin that we stayed in for years, I'm really concerned about fires, and the fact that when you have a fire in a grassland, that it moves incredibly fast. If there's any wind at all, fire going through a prairie can go up to 80 miles an hour, maybe even, even faster. So when we have these tall grass prairies, and it is tall grass we're talking about, not that, there's a tall, short, I mean, tall, medium, and low grasses. And so a tall grass prairie means a specific kind of species of grasses. And it's agreed that we do need to place these back. They're very important to our heritage, also to our animals that use it. But at the same time, I want us to make sure that we have some kind of fire barriers around them, or have a lot of space between the prairie and, and the other vegetation, so that if a fire does happen, that if it gets into the prairie, it will go up and then hit that wall of, you know, just like a space. And just that, just in the planning, please be careful. But do include them. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26, Reese. Yes, I also want to thank Council for its thoughtful discussion of the open space plan. I thought it was well worth listening to. And, and I do think that, that we need to really know what AISD is doing before we look at the north end of Reese, because I could see it being staging for that. You know, there's, there's all kinds of things that could tear down what we're going to do, and I liked all the incremental things people were talking about doing. I think it is important that perhaps Carolyn didn't talk about how much emphasis, like, just to do that tiny trail on Reese, because of the paperwork we had to do, which 34K, right? Or something like that, that we, that we spent on, on just getting that down, and all the years that we had that going, because of mapping. So even though we want to do that, there is a cost associated with just a simple trail. I mean, I'd love it to be as simple as Danny says, you know, just get the guys going through. But, but there are, there are associated costs. What I really wanted to speak to you before you guys got to it, was the permitting items. I think it's really critical, because it got tossed in the discussion, that there was this front-end stuff that, that we have never gotten to in the last three years about development. And I think these checklists are really critical, and I didn't really see what I considered sufficient checklist backup. And I think these are the things that have been repeatedly said by zoning and BOA when I've been in those meetings. And I just think we need to actually have a person who, who we hire to help staff with zoning and permitting as we're moving forward. And, and the very first job, I think, that that person needs to do are checklists. If you look at the city of Lakeway, or you even look at what happens in there, you have forms that say, with checklist, with checklist, with checklist. And, and it just got tossed in during the presentation, but that's the critical thing that we start with, and I think I have concerns if, that we're going forward and making changes to the code before we have adequate checklists, so that people are really clear. And also the flows of the work. So I was somewhat knowledgeable when I went down to the, to develop in Austin, and I still didn't really see the difference between my site plan and my building permits. And that didn't really get even communicated to me, and it wasn't even in their forms, you know, because people who do development assume that other people know it. And I think we need to have really clear maps of that, and really clear checklists. And, and I think we need to do that before we make changes to our code, because it will follow naturally. You know, when you, when you make those lists, which we have really yet to do, then the ways that they don't come together will become obvious, and then the changes will be really obvious. So that's, to me, that's, that's step number one. And the way that the site plan and the building permits interface, because if you're just a regular person, you don't even know that. You don't know what you should do. And so I think that those are, those are the things that we need to start with, and, and then we need, and then there was this idea that the software would solve it. It doesn't. You still have to have a people, a person there to answer all those questions. And, and that's the deficit that we have in staff, besides someone to answer the phones. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Zaria, one else that wishes to speak at this time? Oh, thank you. As a reminder, there is one comment in Open Town Hall. If you get a chance to, to read through it, my wife would appreciate it. Thank you for that reminder. We're going to move on to agenda item number three, which is staff reports, and begin with the administration report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to briefly go over the administration report. Just as a reminder, for our budget adoption process, tonight is, again, no action. It is the formal budget public hearing that's required, so of course, Council can have discussion, but no action will be taken. You know, you can give staff direction. There's a scheduled budget work session that will happen next Tuesday. That will also actually be a called meeting, because there are also some action items we need to take. But the bulk of that will be, again, a budget workshop, you know, depending on what we don't get through tonight. And then the budget adoption is scheduled for the last Tuesday in September, September 27th. So there is no meeting at this time scheduled for the 20th, but if an additional workshop needs to be scheduled, we, we could potentially do that. Just as a reminder, there will be no council meeting on October 4th, immediately following the budget adoption. That is national night out. We do have, all the candidates have filed for the election. Mayor Bruner is running unopposed. For the two, two-year, full-term council member seats, there are three candidates, incumbent Rob, council member Robert Johnson, and then Charles Young and Phil Ellet. For the special, one-year council vacancy, there are two candidates, Karen Medicus and Horacio Zambrano. So those are our candidates for the election, and we have tentatively scheduled the meet the candidates night, that will happen here at City Hall on Tuesday, October the 11th. So there's no council meeting that night, so that is generally when we have the, the meet the candidates forum. Also wanted to point out that committee applications are due. We've extended it to September 16th, that's next Friday. Just as a reminder, if you're currently a member of a committee, you do not need to fill out a form. This is for those that want to be appointed for the fiscal year, starting October 1 through September 30, 2023. Yes, Councilmember?
I wanted to ask, those who are committee members and who want to serve again, don't have to fill out a form, but how do we know that they're going to step up?
Oh, that they're going to remain, well, unless, unless someone indicates that they want to resign, we will just put them on the list. I guess it would be helpful for the staff liaison in the chair, probably just to get some sort of, and we don't need an application, but just an email saying, yes, I'd like to remain on the committee. And then we'll just, you know, appoint all member, reappoint all members that wish to stay on the committee, plus any additional, counsel can consider any additional appointments.
Thank you.
And then, just as a reminder, the zoning commission appointments will happen after the election. We did not change, those still, those appointments still follow the election, and just as a reminder, that is still a two-year appointment. So we'll be taking those applications until, you know, November 1st will be a good due date for those. And then they'll be appointed after the new council's seated on November 15th. And also in your backup And also, in your backup, or in the backup for the admin report, was the first community coordinator report, and Danielle Ramirez is actually here. And she wanted to introduce herself to council, and so I'll give the floor to Danielle.
Hi, thank you so much, and thank you for having me today. I wanted to come in, can you not hear me? Is that better? Okay. I wanted to come in and introduce myself. For the last month, I've just kind of been getting to know the residents, the staff, and the city as a whole. And it's been really exciting to see what is coming forward. It looks like there are a number of projects that are being taken on by different committees and different groups. And so, I've been working with different groups and different committees to see where I fit in and how I can be of service. Right now, I have been, well, most recently, I've been working with CED on some of their upcoming events with volunteers and things like that. But I'm also visiting each one of the standing committees just so I can get to know the members on that committee, and they can get to know me as well and make myself accessible. My background comes in large is academic, so I come from academia, meaning I spent almost a decade in academia where I ultimately ended up being an associate professor. I chaired the department for a few years. I've also owned a store. And so, this position was really interesting to me because I'm able to see it from both perspectives. So, as a business owner, I know what they're dealing with day in and day out. And as, you know, on this side, I'm seeing, you know, how can we help them and how can we communicate effectively and efficiently? I don't know if you guys have any specific questions for me, but I'm happy to take the first one.
Well, thank you for taking the time to come and join us tonight, and welcome. I know you've been here for a while already.
About a month, yeah.
It's good to meet you in person. With that, Councilwoman Rosegarden, and then Councilwoman Johnson.
I wanted to ask, have you gone out and met each manager at the businesses at this time yet?
I have not. I've been working to coordinate this. I've been working a lot with PD because I know that they are very familiar with the businesses. So, me and Officer Ramlo have a few things set up right now for me to go out and meet some of the larger businesses like Academy and Home Depot so that I can meet them, get to know them. I'm also working on creating a database. That way, we can kind of keep up with who are the managers who are the, at the store level, as well as the GMs. So, if there's something that does come up, we have direct contact with them. We're also looking, maybe at the beginning of next year, of organizing a brunch with them. So, have a brunch where we can invite a lot of the managers from the local stores over and just meet and greet, where they get to know us, we get to know them, and there's a certain level of them being comfortable with communicating what their needs are and us being able to talk about how we can help meet those needs.
Thank you.
So, it's in the process.
Excellent. One of the reasons also is because when you do go out and meet the managers, one of the things that I've been asked that would be great is, if you remember, ask the restaurant managers if they accept cash as legal tender. That way, we have that information.
Okay.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Hello.
Hi.
We've exchanged some emails, but it's nice to see you in person. Welcome.
Thank you.
I think the only question I had for you was the, my wife saw this, and then I was reminded when I read it here, the storybook pumpkin contest?
Yes.
Whose idea was that?
You're looking at her.
That was you?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I super love that. And my wife was just like, "This is so cool." This is like the exact kind of thing. It's like a tie-in. Do y'all know what that is? Do you want to?
Yeah, so, we're going to have a citywide storybook pumpkin contest where I'm trying to work with some of the businesses to have some pumpkins donated. So, if y'all know anybody, let me know. But we also will provide some pumpkins to students that can't afford it. But essentially, they come up with what their favorite character is from a book, from a storybook, and you recreate that character using the pumpkin. So, it's a no-carve contest. So, like, for example, I did it with my kids, and we did Pete the Cat. So, I got a pumpkin, we painted the whole thing blue, put the cat ears on there, and you create this whole pumpkin, and it looks like maybe the cover of the book of what that character looks like. And so, we're doing this citywide. I'm going to work with the schools, as well as some of the stores, to post it and kind of really get the word out about it. And we'll have some prizes for the kids that do an exceptional job.
Any other questions for the administration report? Councilwoman Johnson?
Yeah, I have, I think, one or two other questions for admin. Two years ago, we did, we agreed on the format for meet the candidates, I think just over email, potentially, right? Or was that, is that a public, did we talk about that in public, or did we talk about it just?
It's not really a city, it shouldn't be an official city event since it's political.
Right.
But we did utilize Open Town Hall so that I think the candidates were all pleased to have the questions beforehand. Is that, is that how we did it last year, if I'm remembering?
If it's unofficial, we can take this offline.
But I think we can utilize Open Town Hall. But basically, residents can, the way we did it last year is residents, you know, posted the questions, and so there was a question bank. And then the forum moderator, Tom Seidel, you know, chose from those, chose from those questions. But the candidates were able to see the questions so that, you know, they could prepare. And Mayor Bruner indicated he would, he would recommend, since he is on the ballot, and, you know, he's running unopposed, but he is on the ballot, he will be asking a community member to chair the event.
Okay. And then, next, so, I don't know if this is the right forum for this, but I think this is what you were suggesting. So, when we voted on choosing, approving the funds for the murals that have been going up, we, part of that was also the selection of two artists that were voted on by CED and Arts Commission. Talk about this here? Okay. One of the artists actually declined the offer. So, I spoke with Up Art Studio, and the other artist, go ahead.
Is Grace available?
Yeah, that'd be pretty good. It would take her a long time. But, so, the artist that has done three of the five boxes so far has been open to doing other ones and actually has already provided other renderings. I don't know if we need official action. She is one of the artists that was approved, and if one just drops out, then?
I think that can just be staff direction. We have the contract with Up Art Studio, and that was one of the, Avery was one of the artists selected by the committee and, so, the committees. So, I think it can just be staff direction, too.
I didn't want, like?
Since one artist declined, the only artist left is Avery, and she's available to do all five.
You can see that all, they're different themes, but they, you can tell that it's all kind of the same artist so far. And I didn't want to get five done, and then everyone say like, "Oh, what happened to the other artist?" And then it's like, "Oh, I just, oh, never mind." So, okay, let's go. Cool.
Is there a difference in cost from one artist to the other?
No.
Nope.
So, then, yeah, let her do it. Good.
Any other questions for the administration report?
I also love the idea of just like leaving people on the committees until, like, they get four years down the road, and then they're like, "Why aren't we supposed to submit a form to like re-up or something?"
We just did that this year. So, everyone will have to apply next year, but.
All right. We'll be moving on to our Public Works report.
Good afternoon, mayor and council, or good evening, I'm sorry. I just wanted to highlight a few things. I want to thank all the volunteers who had gone out and helped some, do some deadwood removal out in the South Hills Conservation Area. We were able to have American Youth Works come out also and kind of finish that off, and I think that made a huge difference in that area. We've just been, because we did a Public Works report at the last meeting, we've been just doing a lot of upkeep and maintenance around the city in the last few weeks. And the other thing I wanted to highlight is that we did get the letter from the engineer that council, Mayor Protem Cormona had requested regarding the lift station. The engineers, they're going to be involved in the lift station and all the, you know, construction and stuff. We've released those for bids. The good thing is, is that the reason we had to go through SES and get a permit through TCQ is because we're changing from the pumps we have to grinder pumps. We're still doing that, basically, so we don't have to go back to TCQ. And once we do this portion of the project that we're doing, if the city at any point in time says, "You know what? I am, we are going to replace that panel totally," we can do that in 10, within the next 10 years and not have to go back to TCQ at all. It's already been approved. So, it's, it has the ability to, once, once we do 10% of the project, which this will be more, well, more than 10%, we have the ability to have that permit stay open so that we can finish the project and replace the entire panel at some point in the future if we decide to, if there's any need to at that point. So, just wanted to put that out there, and if there's any questions, be happy to answer some questions.
Councilwoman Rees, and then mayor present.
So, with the troubles in Jackson, Mississippi, you know, I have confidence in our city infrastructure, unless you tell me otherwise. But I understand that our infrastructure is, at this point, is good for another 30, 40, 50 years, correct?
Tucking water, I mean, we replace water lines on a fairly regular basis. So, yes, our infrastructure is fairly good right now. On a whole, a lot of our infrastructure is relatively young. So, the city had made a decision to start replacing water lines at that 40-year mark. We are working on the long-range kind of infrastructure plan to look at when those happen. The city would build a lot of things around the same period of time, so there's a lot of things that will be replaced in a, in a time period as well. But right now, I believe we're good. And I know that Texas, we had to do emergency preparedness plans with TCQ, and so every water supply throughout the state had to do these emergency preparedness plans and have a plan in place for how you were going to supply water in the case of prolonged electricity outages. In our case, because the city of Sunset Valley is a direct pressure system from the city of Austin, that kind of falls to make sure Austin also has all of their infrastructure operational. And they have a very, very long and lengthy, so that's already been sent to TCQ for the city of Austin's approval. So, and TCQ is well aware of how our system interconnects with the city of Austin and how we have provided water.
So, you have confidence in the city of Austin's infrastructure and, because I know they had some problems the past year.
They have had some problems. They've made a lot of improvements and have a lot of plans in place now that should hopefully mitigate all of that. I can't obviously say nothing will ever happen, but they've done, they, just like we had to turn in an emergency preparedness plan, they've had to address that as well and have plans in place, including backup power generation, all sorts of things that they have to address. And TCQ is reviewing all of those. I think ours has already been reviewed and whatnot, but I think they're in the process of finishing up those reviews and getting those approved and out. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can see the letter, Caroline, from the engineers. So, they will continue providing?
And we have the budget for that.
Yes. Looking that, what happened with the other bids for the Lone Oak, Sunset, and Jones?
We are about ready to move forward with that. The only thing we're waiting on, we're waiting to finalize the easements. So, the city council has approved the easements, and we can move on. One step we have to also do is get the, if you have a, most people have a mortgage, so the mortgage company is a lien holder, they have to also sign off on those as well. So, we're working through that process and trying to finish up those easements and getting those completed. And so, once we do, I don't want to move forward, especially with Sunset Trail, until we have that in place and we know that we're going to be able to build the water line we need. So, we're finalizing that easement, right, hopefully in the next few weeks or month.
So, is now the council? Is that your, okay?
No, it's just, it's, council has done their part. We were anticipating actually coming to this meeting and asking for a release of bids, but because we have to do that step with the mortgage companies, it's just, we're going to have to get that done first because I don't want to, I can't bid a project that I don't have an easement to build.
Okay. So, looking with that, it is important that we need to have a similar letter. We have to have a similar letter from the engineers in which they compromise that they will continue with the other projects because after, we have to send that for bids, they need to prepare the bids.
Yes, they will.
Okay. Okay, so, this is what I tried to say, because with that bids and the rebids, so, we have to be sure that that bids, they will be enough for the market. It's no magic, but they need to have some criteria so in that way, we don't have the same problem. Because with this, we discussed that almost on January, and it's now September, eight or nine months, and we are not moving. So, before was because the economy is still racing, 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 and we are in one status of sometimes that we are not moving. So, I think that if we have the money, we don't need to procrastinate. So, I'm sorry for saying that, but some of these projects, lift stations now is moving, but we started two or three years ago with that. So, now with this, I would like that you will be moving with them and watching. And until now, I know that the easement is a problem because where do you have the easement as a problem in your list?
It may not, it would probably be on the CIP update. And we have just the one from 8/19 up right now.
Okay. So, I don't want to put more pressure, but I think Caroline, sometimes as communication, if we can have that Public Works report, then they say bids or projects, this is the status, and at this moment, we are waiting for easements. I am telling you that because sometimes the citizens, they are telling me that the members of the council, we don't move because we don't vote. And in reality, we try to be active and very open. So, please, check that.
Okay, yeah, and that is going to be a bigger project. It's not just Lone Oak and Sunset. That is going to be the 290 line, as well as the AISD conversion and drainage. So, it's going to be a massive project. The idea behind that is that we'll hopefully get more competition and more bids, actually, for that and make it a viable project. But yeah, it was on the 8/12, and we will update these. The timing with the invoicing comes later, so that's why these don't get updated at the very beginning of the month. It's usually about a few days later. But it was, we did talk about the easement on there, waiting to finalize those easements.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Public Works? Moving on to public safety.
Good evening, mayor and council. I will, I'll try to get this done before the 7 o'clock time certain item. I'll start off with National Night Out. It starts October, it's October 4th. We will start, we're finalizing everything now. We haven't had this event since 2019, so we're looking forward to it. I'll start sending out information on social media this week, and we should have everything finalized this week as well. The security, building security project, the, I don't know if you've seen some of the surveillance cameras that have already been installed in the buildings. There's one over here in this building. They've done the wiring, the cameras that go on the building should be here on the 15th. So, we should be able to finish this project up end of this month, very beginning of October, and we'll finally be done with that project. And then we'll go into the building of the, for the interior improvements to Public Works, but the surveillance camera aspects of it should be done by early October. I will cover, there was an incident where a man was arrested on Reese last week. I got numerous phone calls about that. There was a homeless man that went into two residents' yard, began throwing their items, I think it was lawn furniture and some pictures over the fence. They called police. We had one officer on duty who was on another call at the time, so he was a little slower to get there. He was the first officer on scene, and then Austin ISD police arrived to help him out. When he contacted the guy, the guy kind of resisted him, and actually, a resident, a male resident had to help him until other officers could arrive. But I received a number of calls on that. No one was injured, and we ended up arresting the suspect. He had a pretty large amount of drugs on him, more than you would think somebody who was homeless because he had a lot of money. He was worth the drugs on him, but, but that incident did cause a little bit of a stir in the neighborhood, but. that incident did cause a little bit of a stir in the neighborhood, but again, nobody was hurt and no major damage was done to anybody's property. That's it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Chief, we appreciate the meeting that we have with you last Saturday. I was talking with some of the members of the, that district, and they say then, was also clear for them, and they were so happy, and only that they, they want to have maybe more of that meetings with, with the chief, almost quarterly. It is difficult for him, because he came on Saturday. But the questions that they were asking him, I think then pertain to the community, and sometimes the people is not doing that. But that Saturday, they were drinking coffee, taking some tacos, and, and they, they, they felt free. And, and Chief, is, is Brown, is the other officer that was with you?
Brown Law.
Brown Law. Also, they have an excellent comments for him, for both. And they showed us with some drawings and et cetera, so it was very clear. And only they, they came seven houses, but they are fifty-two houses. But at this moment, we have a lot of, a lot of houses, and they are in rent, they are renting the houses, they are not leaving the owners, so this is why they didn't show up. But the most important is thank you, because you made an excellent effect in the people, and I hope that we will move with that, that we discuss. That was right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And seven houses, when there's not anything like big going, like, if we had had that after the incident on Reese, I would have had a lot more people show up. When there's nothing really exciting going on, seven houses, that's pretty good turnout in a fifty-two-house neighborhood, that's not, I wasn't disappointed in that at all.
Any other questions?
It's just the nature, that's the nature of it.
Yeah, but thank you for taking time out to, to meet with the residents. Any other questions for Public Safety? All right, thank you, staff. Council, I'd like to do our consent items, and then we'll move into our agenda item number nine, the time certain item. So if there are, at this time, a motion for approval on consent, or, you know, that we can obviously remove them, but Councilor Rosengarten?
I move to approve on consent, agenda item number five, agenda item number six, agenda item number seven, and agenda item number eight.
Motion to approve on consent for five, six, seven, and eight. Does anybody from Council want to pull one of those items? Councilor Johnson?
I have one question per seven and eight, sorry.
Okay, so we'll pull seven and eight, so that leaves five and six. Anybody want to pull anything further? Okay. All those in favor of approving on consent, item number five and number six, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved on consent. Can, item number five, consider an act on approval of the minutes from August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting and work session in August twentieth, twenty twenty-two, called meeting. Item number six, consider an act on approval of an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget, budget amendment number fifteen, for security system upgrades and emergency wastewater repair services, as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. And so Council, at this time, we're going to go to our time certain item, agenda number nine, Agenda Item Number Nine, Public Hearing and Presentation on the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-three Proposed Budget with Possible Direction to Staff. So just as a reminder, we're not voting tonight, and this is a chance for us to continue work on the budget, including any additional items that Council needs further information on or that we want to bring back. Our schedule for adoption is the twenty-seventh. As Matt noted, we do have enough overflow with other items, but also budget discussion, where I'd like to have a call meeting next week on the thirteenth. It won't hopefully be as long as our regular Council meetings, but it'd be an opportunity for us to also bring back anything that we want from this discussion at that time, at that meeting. So perhaps if we want to begin with staff, kind of just an update of where we're at in terms of, I know there were some bringbacks that we had answered by staff that are in the backup. Then we also have a revised budget that was presented to Council, some of you also getting physical copies if you needed them.
Yeah, we're, we're calling the city administrator now. Hopefully, the audio works and doesn't give us feedback. And Kyle's also here to answer any questions, but we did, staff did repost the budget. It is still the mayor's proposed budget that was filed on August eleventh, but there were some corrections and just some reformed pages and, and spreadsheets, I believe, and the budget. So staff will be happy to ask, answer any questions, and the city administrator may have some comments as well if we can get this out to work, so.
Budget, it's still the mayor's proposed budget.
Does Council have any questions regarding the, the budget and the backup provided?
One thing, it, it might be good if you bring up the, the questions that we brought from our last meeting. I think there was, there were several that, that staff was able to provide some responses to. One of the first questions, I think, Councilor Reitz, there was a question about how much of the staff salary is in our crime control prevention, you know, in terms of, if we wanted to look at it in terms of funding a certain amount, what would we need to make sure is in there? So the, the answer to that is, the total staff expenses for three months is about seventy-five thousand dollars, so that's a good sort of marker to say if we want to make that three months, six months, nine months, or full year, we can use that as a benchmark.
Yeah, so the goal at the end of the year, we would have seventy-five thousand dollars left in that account, and that would get us the three months for that next year. So that's really, but, but everything else in that account should be utilized in.
Yeah, so one option, if we did adopt a more aggressive drawdown of the Crime Control Prevention District would be to find way, you know, basically allocating more of the money, you know, to, from possibly general fund items or from other costs, you know, and, and put that in the, the Crime Control Prevention District.
Would that work, Kyle? Okay. And that way, you know, this is a tax and that we are spending what we are taxing, so.
The next item on the list that we had was, what is the twenty-year utility infrastructure project list? So this is something that is still under review, so we don't have the, the full details here, and it's not something that we'll be able to bring back for, for our budget session, but just knowing that we've identified that is a longer term than what the general of the CIP is targeted for. The next item, Council, I'd ask if we could bring back a list of our balance sheets, end of year balance sheets for the last five years, so we could look at the numbers, and if you can maybe zoom in on that, Matt, or Carolyn, to make it bigger. And so what I really wanted to, to kind of look at was, one of the things that, you know, obviously, as a city, we have a lot of benefits, and certainly one of the things that has happened over the last five years, even with the economic downturn during COVID, we've continued to have a lot of reserves, and in fact, we've continued to build up our reserves over that time, to the point where, you know, we, you know, we, we generally don't, we underbudget and we, you know, everything that we come in with, and we underestimate what our reserves are, what our income's going to be, and that, as a practice, goes into our reserves. And so you can see, just from a trend, most of our funds, historically, have been going up, you know, and that's both, there's other drivers, inflation, things like that. But that, there are some funds that obviously have been drawn down to, like our City of Facilities Fund, which had a set aside balance for spending on a project, and then others that have been relatively consistent. But I wanted to give this as a, a discussion point in case we wanted to, you know, look at the longer-term trends, not to say that we're going to necessarily dip into these, but we do have a lot of reserves that we've accumulated over the past five years, which is great, but it also means that, you know, these are potentially where we could tap into, draw for projects, depending on what those needs are. Now, I heard Sylvia, you know, asking if we can hear her, so she may want to speak. So I'll, Sylvia, can you hear us now? I think you can, but you, there may be a bit of a delay in the public meeting that you're viewing.
Sylvia?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I was just saying, Sylvia, I, I heard you try, trying to speak, so I'll go ahead and speak. I, we didn't know if you could hear us in, with the public, with the delay, if you could hear everything we're saying.
I did not hear at all. Can somebody repeat the question to me in the phone?
He was asking if you can hear us?
No, not really, it's very garbled.
I'll repeat the questions to you.
Okay.
Okay, so, so at this time, we don't have questions, but as we get them, we'll repeat them, and we'll try to work through that system, so, okay. The next item that we had here was the list of our current rebates and amounts, and I believe this was Mayor Protem, you had a specific question, or maybe it was, I can't remember who had this question, but I'm not sure if this answers fully what, what the request was or the need was for listing out the rebates that we have. I think this, this also may have been part of our discussion about, maybe Councilor Reitz, this was one of your questions that you had as well.
Right, it, it was about looking at a more radical idea that I have of really upping our rebate and looking at that, and so this is kind of where we're at right now, so.
Councilor Johnson?
Does that include like solar and everything?
So those totals, I mean, that's what's been spent, I believe, so far, correct, Kyle? That's what's been spent so far, so there's not been a solar rebate requested that has been paid at this point in time. So, and if there was, it would be three thousand dollars that would have been out there. So as far as budgetary goes, energy conservation, I think, is fifteen thousand, water conservation is twenty-six thousand, but that also, that's just the rebates, I think, that have been spent so far. That does not include, I think, the reimbursement for the under three hundred thousand gallons in that total. And then. Yeah, and so, and so I would say that there are recommendations, I know that Planning Environmental have made, and I think we're going to bring that back next week as part of the budget workshop, is to bring back and to have a discussion regarding the rebate programs. And some of those recommendations really kind of streamline the process and to, you know, focus in, especially on that outdoor watering and things that we can do of that nature, to, to, to really make those rainwater harvesting rebates and stuff more durable.
Yeah, so what I'm thinking is that, you know, this was a really tough year, and a lot of lawns died, and this is actually a really good time to replant in a lawn that is more drought tolerant and, but that's a huge cost. And, and so I, you know, we have resources, we have reserves, and what if we became a city where all of our lawns were more drought tolerant, we all had large water retention tanks, and so we can reduce our dependence on water, and we are good stewards of water. I mean, that is one of our key values of this city. And to do that, I think you need to make very, very generous either rebates or help with that, you know, what is a ten thousand dollar rebate, what, you know, what a retention tank, I believe we did some research, maybe eight thousand or something like that.
Yeah, and the current rebate is thirty-five hundred, and the first five hundred is covered at a hundred percent, and after that, it's fifty percent. So that's what we're looking at, so maybe changing those numbers a little bit.
And, and then the other thing that would really help is for the city lines up a contractor to come in and probably get reduced rates if, if they're working within the city, and they could work, you know, work with all of our houses and such. And so it could be, to me, it could, we could be that model community, and it's really hard for, to retrofit versus if we were a brand-new committee, you could, you could kind of mandate this stuff, but we're kind of having to retrofit, and it, it will cost some money. And, and if, if there's any place I'd really like to see our money spent, that would be, that would be, you know, that's our value system, and so that, to me, makes sense. So that, I think that would be great if I would visit that and look at that.
Councilor Johnson?
So I, I think people would agree that the, the rebates are a signal of, this is the behavior we would like to see in our, in our residents. I don't know how much money is left on the table out of, like, what is the negative space there that we're not seeing, but with the, the turnover that we see in the city, I think there's an opportunity there, I think Danielle left, but just for some education as well, this is aside from the budget, but most people might not even know that this is available. And so, and as soon as we agreed that we want to bring back the newsletter, like, you got to have, you got to have a pipeline for content, so sometimes you're just like, whatever you can get, but I mean, that is great content for the newsletter, just, oh, you mean I can get this much money off of programs that we are interested in, like fostering in our, in our neighborhood? So that was, can I ask a question that isn't in this?
Yeah, please go ahead.
The, so I mentioned it during the Open Spaces work session, we're going to have an urban forestry, like a planting event, and that, the perfect time to plant is about the time that we're finalizing budget, and so it's a weird thing to, which year is it in, you know? So we plant, there's a lot of money left, but we're hoping to spend it all at about the time the budget is, we're entering the next fiscal year, but I noticed that urban forestry was cut back down to the level it was before, and I was looking to get that back in. I know where, I know where the numbers are, but how much were we off? We're off by nine thousand?
Sorry, four or five, I can't remember, yeah.
That's all I'm looking for?
Four or five thousand.
We will spend that money, don't worry, but we just didn't get around to spending it yet. We're going to spend it in about a month here.
Put some of the trees in front of my house.
We can do that. Well, we talked about that.
I use that planting, because it kind of leads into the next one, is that I would, I love the idea of planting three hundred trees a year, we don't have the staff to maintain and give those, bring, bring those trees to fruition. However, we did use that example of the project we did over in the meadows, and we would like to do that, so eventually, we will get there.
So you're saying we could do it in residents' yards, or is it all?
No, 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 we can't plant, it was, it's in the right of way. It's in the right of way, but the residents, like, partnered with the city, and they, they kind of adopted a tree, I mean, that's really an adopted tree program, is they, they adopted those trees and helped to water those trees over the establishment period, so it was a really good project that we did over there in that neighborhood.
Okay, so writing down, at least for bringing back an item is revisit, or re- revisiting the amount that's in the urban forestry line that we have right now? Okay. And then, so I heard Carolyn, that next week for the budget workshop, we'll have more details about recommendations for rebates?
Yes, we have those from Planning Environmental.
And that's where we can also look at potentially in adopting or making further revisions. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I, I would like to, to go with that. I, I think that would be more easy if we can adopt trees, so, because the staff, they don't have time, they cannot bring water to that place, but in each house, we have the water, and we have the space, and, and it's amazing, from two thousand and six, when village start, there used to be a thiny trees, nothing, and now that looks incredible. Now, in this case, it don't take too much, but again, we have to be active, no, we don't need to let this in the, oh, wait, it's a good idea, and we don't move from there. So my suggestion, is the same than yours, is that when we, we can start the plan or adopting, in October, November, but we have to have a, a date. So in that way, if the trees, they came to you, how we can be working at, at home, they need to give it to us a good ideas, because we cannot start making holes and later having leaks, all that kind of things, because we don't know where we will make the holes. We have to have some orientation, how deep, and, and that kind of things, but, but I, I propose that we have to move. Mr. Mayor?
I think Councilor Johnson was going to answer your question. Okay.
I was going to answer.
Well, you were going to answer a question about when we're getting the planting.
Oh, well, the planting, I wrote it down.
October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth.
And we're going to be doing thirty-seven Lone Oak and the Valley Creek Park, some plantings at those locations.
Right, so two locations, I, I'm going to send it out, I'm also, I'm doing Two Birds with One Stone, because in the, in the, what's the meeting, why am I drawing a blank on everything? The meeting where we have a bunch of the committees in, the joint, the joint committee meeting, we talked about introducing more tools for collaboration that is not Microsoft done. We talked about introducing more tools for collaboration that is not Microsoft Office. And so I'm putting together everything I need to use Google Docs as a test, test run. So just Two Birds with One Stone. But one thing that came out of my conversation with Carolyn about the event, though, was I said, you know, use an auger. And she said, you don't want to use an auger, because it, it...
Glazes a hole.
It glazes the hole and, you know, it can cause girding, girding, girdling?
Girdling, or, yeah, making root boundaries.
It was mind-blowing. I didn't realize, the, so October 26, you'll get emails.
Excuse me.
Yep.
We are talking different things.
Okay, that's why I didn't...
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, please.
No, no, because you said that that will be a plan that they have, it's in October 26. When they were talking, the other members, and I was agreeing, was partners adoption. And that is totally different.
Yes.
So in that way, that was my question. When we will start with that, we allocate money for that. And if we didn't allocate, we need to start looking how we would be doing that. This is what I tried to say. Because if no, yeah, we, we have trees. No, it's different the way than I am asking. And in that way, we have to be equal. Because we will do this here, we will do that. No. We need to go open with all the citizens. And in the newsletter, they, they can invite the people, and we can have that compromise. But we don't need to be reserves. We need to be open, is my suggestion.
And just to clarify, we don't, so in the current budget, we don't have any budget set aside for that type of partnership for like a residence, other than adopt a tree, which is the coverage of...
Okay, so we have the adopt-a-tree program where residents can buy trees. We can't plant trees in people's yard, obviously. However, we'd have done, the project that we did in the meadows was done through urban forestry-type funds and Arbor Day events. So we can do things, and because that's in the right-of-way, and the residents adopted the trees in the right-of-way. So that can be done, but as far as, we can't go out and plant trees on private property.
Right. Johnson?
The, I, I think there is a place for knowing where the lines are and even getting the whole dog in it. They'll drop off a tree and say, this is what you gotta do, but they're not, not gonna do it. The, Burton really has my, the wheels in my brain turning. I may be too pedantic on this, but should we rename the urban forestry line item to something a little more... Because, tell me if that's a dumb idea, but, you know, just rename it, because maybe that's not the one-size-fits-all name for what we want to do with those funds.
Well, it, it depends. I mean, so there's other things we do with those funds, too. So there's some maintenance that we do on some city trees. There's some trees over here across on Jones Road that we do some treatments on, kind of regularly. We also do, if there's a tree, at least one of those trees over there ended up getting cabled and braced, just to hold it together and so that we can keep those trees going. So that does fall into kind of an urban forestry-type thing. So it's not just planting trees, but it's also the maintenance of those trees over time and also the removal of dead trees and hazard trees. So all of that kind of falls under that umbrella.
All right, so maybe next year, well, there's an election in between. But maybe next year, there could be something that is a little bit more geared towards habitat, re, whatever, generated, whatever.
Yes, we can, yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor Protim?
So on October 26, you will be using the adopt a tree for energy conservation, or what?
No, this will be urban forestry projects.
So that will be, you have only $5,000 for that?
Yeah, well, I don't, I think that's FY '23 you're looking at. We're gonna be using the FY '22 budget to do that. We're gonna be purchasing a lot of it in advance.
So for that reason, Mr. Mayor, we are not using, we have plenty money if we, if we try to do that, adopt a tree. So they will, they will have here, adopt a tree, $7,500 for the new budget. And if she will be using for the purpose than he said, they have another $5,000. So the funds, they are there for the new budget.
Although what I heard was that we're gonna be short about $4,000 in next year's budget?
So I think when we had this year's budget, I wanna say there was $9,000 in the budget. Maybe it was 7,500. I'll have to look at those numbers. 9,000, and we have 7,600 left at this point in time. And so we are gonna be using that to purchase things in advance for, because Arbor Day always kind of falls on an awkward period of time in between them. So whatever we are budgeting for, in the FY '23 budget, is for the following year. So, yeah, it's gonna, it kind of rolls, they kind of roll over.
Okay. So, yeah, good.
If it's easier, the thing is, I didn't know when the best time to plant was. And so the timing, and the timing of the planting event is a little awkward. And so if need be, maybe we don't encumber the funds this year and we just immediately spend the budgeted money for fiscal year '23? If we want to start getting on a cycle, that's a little bit more in line.
And we can do that, too.
Councilor Rosenkrad?
So if I have kept decent notes, are you saying you have $7,600 plus $9,000?
Yeah.
No?
No, we had $9,000 to start with. There's $7,600 remaining in FY '22. We've spent 1,400 so far.
Okay, so 7,600 from 2022?
Yes.
And into 2023, we have 9,000?
No, we have 5,000.
So 5,000.
7,000.
So we have 5,000 for 2023, and we have 7,600 from 2022?
Yes.
So that's $12,600.
True.
Okay. Do you have, within that amount, have you planned that this year, you're gonna do open forestry within the right-of-ways?
It would not be in, it wouldn't be in calendar year '22. It would probably be in calendar year '23 that we would do that. We'd probably do that. We can do a spring planting and start doing that kind of work. We can do those, I think, in the spring, because the residents usually do a really good job of helping those to maintain.
Versus doing it in the fall, wouldn't it be better?
But if we want to plant and have more trees planted and we do a resident participation, that is a way to do that, so we can plant more trees in one year.
All right, so Council, I'm gonna keep going down the list, and we can obviously circle back to other items and bring up new ones. The next one on the list is the, I requested if we could bring back the Austin Water and Wastewater rate tiers compared to Sunset Valley, Water and Wastewater rate tiers. And if you could, scroll down to the attachment. So, you know, I think we all knew this. This is something that, you know, we undercharge for our water compared to Austin, you know, especially by volume. If you look at the Austin volumes, if you scroll down, essentially, their fixed, you know, their five-tier volume charge, roughly double, you know, what we charge, but it's also kind of based on tiers. So if you're in that, probably the majority of our residents are in that 6,000 to 11,000 gallon range, just on an average. Austin charges $8.34 unless you're under their cap program, and in that case, they're charging $6. If, in that range, for us, we charge $3.31. So we're, we're really more than half of what, you know, a resident in Austin charges. They also have a higher fixed-tier charge, which, you know, is also volumetrically based. We're, we're not volumetrically based for fixed-tier, fixed charges, where, which is of a flat fee of 9, 914, I think. And then if you circle down to wastewater, wastewater is where there's a more significant difference. And that's where, basically, you know, the, the volume charge is about $10 for everything over 2,000 gallons for wastewater, which most of our residents fall under, compared to our wastewater, where if you, if you go back up, I think it's, that's where we, we don't, you know, recapture a lot of that. Let's see. Yeah, zero for, within that same tier. So we're not charging, you know, for the first 10,000, whereas compared to Austin. So that being said, you know, that we, one of the conversation points we had is that, you know, if we're looking at revisiting this as a bigger discussion than necessarily what we can tackle in our current budget, it is aligned, you know, to discuss, I think, water and wastewater rates as far as the other goals of the city is, and the longer-term needs of the city with regards to, in the region, you know, with regards to conservation and making sure that we are not overusing water or encouraging that. However, you know, this is obviously an area where we don't have a true cost study for what it would cost for our water. I would just, you know, this is something that we've known is, is a discrepancy in terms of like what Austin residents, you know, pay for water and will, we charge our residents. So I wanted to include that information as part of our backup, if we are considering a longer-term project of addressing the, the rates that we charge for water and wastewater. The related item, which is the next one on the list, is just in comparison to our solid waste, which has seen increasing costs and on an annual basis, actually has like, I think, a built-in cost escalation as part of the contract. It's what I asked staff to just calculate to, for comparison, is back in 2020, when Council adopted a additional service for recycling every week was the change. And then I think there may have been some other changes for green waste at the same time. But I think the recycling every week was the main driver. There was a significant increase to our contract. We didn't pass that along to residents, and we've been absorbing that. So essentially, what we collect is about $7,000 a year from residents in terms of what we bill on an annual basis. If you look at what the certain costs, you know, just the increase for adding the additional recycling, plus the escalation that's happened year over year. If you went to fiscal year '23, for example, you know, what, what the, you know, the difference in, in essentially costs that we did not pass along, that the city absorbed, is a rate difference from between that $1.84 that we currently charge under the Sunset Valley rate and fiscal year '23, which is $29.22. That's just for the increased contract costs that we, we adopted in fiscal year 2020 and the escalation that's happened every year since then. So you can see the delta that we have, where we're collecting about $7,000 a year, grows by about $4,000 to $5,000 every year, just on the, the delta for escalation and for where we're at. If we were to pass, if we had passed along the cost, of course, the rates would have increased, but the collection amount, you know, would have offset, you know, the amount that we paid to the contract. So I just want to make sure that this information was there, so that we could see that this is a problem that we are not passing along on our, our escalation. At the very minimum, we could do that to absorb that $4,000 that we're getting every year, and it accumulates, you know, over time. We're, you know, we're projecting out that, you know, essentially, we're gonna continue collecting about $7,000, that that deficit is gonna continue to grow year over year. Councilor Rosenkrad?
Exactly what you said is that when we agreed to pass on the increase in utility rates, we didn't say water, we said utility rates, that we would pass that on to the residents, because we were trying to cap the subsidies at a 500,000. Because you can't do any budget with the city if you don't know what the expenses are going to be. And so when we were building the city facilities, we were looking at, how can we cap that so we can plan accordingly? This is what the revenues are, this is what the expenses are. When you leave the utilities open, we can't plan. So this year, I, I wrote down my numbers. Water subsidy is $363,190, and the cost of water from Austin is $610,000. So we're over half as to what the subsidy is from what it costs us from the city of Austin. Wastewater subsidy is $329,498, and the cost for wastewater service to the city of Austin is $540,000. Again, our subsidy is over half of what it costs us from the city of Austin. Solid waste subsidy is $240,684, sales is $4,792, and the cost to TDS is $115,160. So we agreed as a council, I forget what year it was, that any time that we were going to get increases in rates, we would pass those increases on to the residents. I don't think that's been happening. Now, we didn't have a water increase for the last, I know, three years for sure. But I know we've had an increase in TDS, and we need to be passing some of that on. Because it's, it's hard to do any budgets when you can't work with solid numbers. Thank you.
So I think one suggestion is, is we can bring back that $1.84 rate. It's at least the escalation increases by the 3%, you know, just so we're at least matching. I don't know if we want to go backwards. I don't think it's really...
You don't want to go backwards? No. Right, no. Just start from here and say from now on.
I cannot hear. Mark, Mark?
You're... Yes, so I, I think it, one, I think that $1.84 that we are charging, we, we've been keeping it flat. I would, I think that at least starting this year, starting to increase that by whatever the contract percentage is, so 3% a year is a good start, but that's just also just means that we're, it's masking the larger problem of, you know, we have these large subsidies and whether that's something that we need to tackle as a bigger, bigger issue. I know that was raised as a concern that we are increasing our subsidies by so much, you know, this year, so.
You could probably go up to $5, and I don't think that people would complain that much.
Right, just to, because right now, it's a, it's a $1.84 is a month, right? And then if you have an extra card, that's where you, if you have $5 a month, you're at least, you're at least catching up some of that. Councilor Rosenkrad?
I would wonder, previously, we did not have pickup on the recycling every week. We only had it every other week. So that's the last thing that was added without turning on a cost to the residents. So what if we simply started charging for the second pickup? The, every, every other week, you charge for that pickup, and what does that come out to be? So we used to have recycling picked up twice a month. Now it's being picked up four times a month.
Right, and so that, that...
So what did that increase?
That happened in FY '20 to FY '21.
Yes.
So it was 21.56. When we added that extra service, that extra, those extra pickups, it jumped to 27.02. So that is the difference between those, and so that's where we kind of started those numbers at. Now, we cannot make it a, you choose to do this kind of thing. It's, trash pickup is an all-or-nothing kind of thing.
So it's $5, right there?
So it's, well, yeah, it would be, FY '22 would be 6.54, but it'd be, it should have been $5.46 in FY '21.
Yeah.
Why don't we do $5.46?
Mayor Protim?
Yeah, I, I would like to say that, again, how lucky we are, not only for the green space that we have, it's for the business that we have. So the business is, is critical in the way that we set our standard of life. So it's nice that at this moment, this, this money that they transfer from the budget will go to each resident. And if we are talking at this moment, $1.1 million, and you divide it by 240 houses, we will start talking over $2,000. That would be very difficult for each person or each house to pay. So this can go that way. But I would like to say that we were looking, that we have in all the funds, until last year, in reserves, almost $25 million. And now we will be over $26 million. So if we are in that way, and we are looking, then our business, our revenues, they gave it to us that, why we need to start... I'm, I'm sorry. Then I try to say this. If we are looking transfers and subsidies in the order of $1.1 million, I think that, as I say, we are lucky, then if at this moment, you have only 250 houses, or 240, and you divide the $1.1 million, that will be difficult for that people to pay. Now, I don't, I don't believe that it's important to move on, move on, move on, okay? The people is, we assumed that some people is wasting water. And I can see that every morning, when I saw that, a lot of water over the... every morning when I saw that a lot of water o- over the street. Well, maybe the tiers, we need to start thinking how we can be working with the tiers. And in that way, the people that use more water, they will pay more money. And at this moment, we say, yes, there is no improportion. How much money? Did you try to, you find the number?
Yes, 933-372 is the total subsidies.
Yeah, but you divide that in the houses and later divided by 12.
How many houses?
240.
240?
Yeah, 240.
Okay.
There's some businesses in there too.
Divided by 12. No, because at this moment, we are in this area only residential, residential, because we chart to the business, the the 571, only with them, they need to pay the original. And in, but coming to my point, I I I think then, at this moment, if we are looking that we will increase this from $25 million to $26 million in reserves, good, but we don't need to tell to the public that at this moment, we we are thinking to raise just a little, just a little. Well, perhaps tomorrow, the economy went down and perhaps tomorrow, you need to pay all that you use of the water. But why we are pushing, why we don't wait until that will be, the only thing that is important, as you say, is to pay for infrastructure. That infrastructure is important. So if she say that we are working and we allocate and we are doing CIP, the chains, this is that we need to support, but but not the others. So I I I think, I I think then, when I show this to somebody, because I made the numbers, I say, well, you will be paying maybe around $1,400 a a a year. My income is almost that. For me, I am retired. As a retired, my income is is in that way. So if at this moment I have to pay $1,500, I need to, I I need to do a lot of chains to cover that. So here, we can be talking and it's important that we need to discuss and it's important that the public, they will understand that the money is increasing in reserves. We are not wasting that money. This is that is important, but we don't need to put the people with the stress that we are planning to do this or planning to do that. And look, they are not doing this now because they they are not in the in the bullet for for positions because nobody wants to pay more. But maybe they are thinking, no, we have to react according with the economy in the same way that they were doing before. In the, in the, in the last year, in 2019, looks, looks like the big change, if you see from 20 millions, we went to 22 and later to 25, but we didn't invest money. We saved it at that time. We didn't have a lot of projects. And I I I understood at that time, the budget adjustments because we cut too much to the bone that we didn't have nothing to pay to the bones. So I think that now, in the way that I am looking is, is nice as a education, education for everybody, but we have to be very careful. We have to be very careful, don't scare the public because it's bad. It's bad if if they, they are afraid that they will pay too much. They need to understand that they are living with the water quality of the city of Austin and better service because here, if you call, they came, the employees, city of Austin, it takes time. So this is the difference and that that is important. And I think then, I can see that way. And I appreciate that they show this to the public, but, okay.
And and I think to your point, you know, because it's, it is one of the benefits of living in the city that we have, you know, this, these subsidies. However, where it comes into conflict with the things that we value, I think specifically and that we see as evidence growing around us, especially with water use and conservation, that's where it becomes a challenge, you know, and and I think also it when it's, when we're in a good, you know, fiscal position, it's easy for us to say, you know, we can absorb this, but then what if there is that downturn, then suddenly things are, you know, much tighter. I think I would, what, if there was one change I could make this year, it'd be a tweak, it would be to our rate structure, you know, to make it more expensive for, you know, users to use water over 10,000 gallons, right? The majority of our water users are below 10,000. We don't charge, right now, we charge $5.60 for, between 10,000 and 19,000, between 10,000 and 20,000 gallons, we charge $5.60. And that is just so low compared to, you know, what City of Austin charges, what the the value of the water is, what the infrastructure needs are. I would, I would say just creating maybe even another set of tiers, you know, within that, you know, from that, you know, to to offset some of that cost, that that's a change, I think, that would go a long ways towards, it's not, it's not going to affect a lot of the residents, it's going to affect, it's going to help us with our water conservation goals and encouraging that, you know, to to try to get people to use less water. And I think right now, our, you know, we have rebates, we have those things, but we don't have like a, you know, a price schedule that really, you know, reinforces that, so. Councilor Johnson.
Our last conversation about this, I asked a question which is really difficult to answer, which is, do we want people water, would we agree that the majority of this water is spent on landscaping? I have three daughters who refuse to take baths or showers together, so that's where the majority of our water is going, but the, do, do we, do we, do we want people to water stuff? If if it is not sustainable in central Texas to have green lawns, I, I get, unless they're buffalo grass, it's just, it seems like a little bit of like a hard thing to maintain, old oak trees and everything else that are, that is in our yards. Is it on a trajectory where we will be able to continue to sustain just with natural rain and if we're trying to just keep it alive by watering it with our reservoirs? Because I could, I can hear the argument that, yeah, like, keep it green in Sunset Valley and more, more green kind of leads to more rain happening. We've seen like the, the urban, what is it called, the urban island effect or whatever?
Heat island effect.
What's that? A heat island effect. And I took this great screenshot of a storm on the weather app I use and it was literally raining everywhere except Austin. And I thought this has to be just a coincidence, but I'd heard about that effect and just to see it was really striking, so. But, you know, if we maintain having large trees and and everything else, then maybe we can help retain some of that, that water. So I, I know it's fine to just increase it a little bit. I don't think it's going to break anyone's bank. If we ever really look at this, i- in my mind, it's a 20, 30 year plan, you know, just to slowly get it up to, up to par if we change it at all. So I'm, I'm fine if we want to move it now, but anything past that, I really want us to look and say, maybe it's okay if people are using 20,000 gallons of of water. It feels wrong, but maybe it's an okay use.
Yeah.
Councilor Rosengard and then Councilor Reed.
Previously, just to give you some history, previously, when we, the last time we increased the rates, it was the solid waste and it was wastewater. And what we did is we talked about doing, and we were all up for reelection, so it matters not when it happens because people remember when you increase their, their fees, it's money out of their pocket. So we agreed to do $5 added to the utility bill and that was so that we could do the water rate study. And once we got $15,000, the agreement was it was going to be taken off the utility bill. That didn't happen. As soon as we got the $15,000, then staff at that time, our city administrator, decided to put it on the agenda that we would break $5 up, $4 into solid waste and $1 into wastewater. I'm hoping I've got the numbers right. It's reversed?
I need reversed.
Okay, so it was the, the $5 was break, broken up to four and one, however it landed. That made me very upset because we didn't hold to what we said. We promised that money would be taken back out of the utility bill at that time. If we didn't make that promise, then so be it, but we made that promise. So then we increased the rates without taking that $5 away, at least wait a year and then come back and say, hey, we need to add some more fees. This time, we're not making that promise. What we're saying is, what if we increased TDS? We we decreased the subsidies that we give to TDS. I'm not talking water, I'm not touching water. So now, at 546, for 12 months, that's $65.52, 240 households, that's $15,724.80. Now we have $15,000. What if every time we increased a utility rate to the residents, we took that money and put it aside and used it to start buying rainwater collection rebate programs? That would be every household eventually gets a rain barrel collection. So now we're, we're also causing them to use less water. So we're increasing their fees, they'd have to pay more fees than what they pay in Sunset Valley, anywhere else, but we're taking that money that we're asking them to help contribute and we're using it for good to help them lower their water usage. What about that? Just another idea. Because I know back when we talked about increasing water rates back in whatever year it was, I kept arguing for the family who had five kids next door to me. They'll never be the one who gets the rebate by not using more than 3,000 gallons, never, simply because they have too many people in the household. So I understand your pain. It's the people who are fortunate enough to use 3,000 or less, why are we paying their water bill? Just haven't, that's me. Why are you paying my water bill? I can afford to pay that majority of times during the summer, it's higher, but majority of times when it's not summertime, that's me, that's, that's 3,000 and under. So I I think that has been a bad program to say, because you are able to use 3,000 gallons and under, we're going to pay you water bill. Thank you.
Councilor Reed.
So, so that is the, that is kind of another thought process where where you have significant rebate program for water retention, but you also have a carrot and a stick approach where water rates do go up, so you are ready to make that change and ready to buy into that and, you know, because it's a change for every household. Every household would have a water tank and that would be a change and some people change, they don't like change. So, but that would be a kind of a carrot stick approach where, you know, to encourage that and, you know, and that's really where we want to go because long term, we don't know, you know, the city of Austin and our, our water sources, you know, you know, right now, we have contracts and I think they have to give us contracts, but they, you know, we still, we need to be as self sufficient as we can, so.
Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, planning environmental and maybe public works might also want to talk about this too, so.
So apologies, was your suggestion about solid waste? It's, it's educational partially because I, you know, I think this is information that, you know, it's useful to revisit with council. Solid waste was, I think, to catch up with some of the increased costs, but my other suggestion was revisiting our tiers for water charges to encourage people to conserve water or to transition to less intense water needs, right? In conjunction with like potentially having a more substantive rebate program. So if you're to Councilor Reed's point, people are faced with, if I'm spending more than 10,000 gallons a month on watering my lawn, but I have this great rebate that allows me to harvest rainwater and maybe even the, so more substantial transition support for a less intensive, you know, lawn that would get me below that 10,000, I'm going to be incentivized both ways, right, to carrot and stick. So it, I I was really talking about both things.
Okay, yeah, I, I said by everything I said, I was just kind of had my wires crossed about what you're saying. I do, another carrot and stick, I, I, we used to, the, the Johnson household at one race, used to use the smallest trash can that TDS offered, if it was TDS back then. And I, we just did that because we were living in bigger cities and we're just used to, and we didn't have kids yet and whatever. Now we have the three large ones and I don't think there was a break given for the small one. Is that correct? Because they have three sizes.
They did at one time. TDS no longer offers a multiple size card, they standardize all their operations on that.
Never mind then. I was like, there's a, there's a carrot and stick, never mind.
I'm going to open up for members of the public to give their, oh, Councilor Reed.
I have one more thought process and I was hoping to get either Kyle or Chip's thoughts on this, on, on the whole repair and replacement budget. So this is a whole new budget that y'all have put in place and y'all have come up with, if I read it correctly, $420,000 a year that we would fund. I, I'm sure y'all did some sort of analysis. Can you go through what that analysis was? I'm, I'm looking at $135,000, $135,000 in vehicles every year. Do we spend $135,000 in vehicles every year? This is page 140.
Originally, the recommendation from staff was, I believe, for a total of $450,000, that would be an annual fund and, is this on?
It's automated, it's set with our line.
All right, sorry, the, I think the original recommendation from staff was for $450,000 and that would be, I forget the amounts, I think it was $270,000, $180,000 for the two different funds.
Yeah.
I may have that wrong, Kyle, correct me. To be annually funded, and we asked the same question you did, are we really going to spend that much money on vehicles? So we made a recommendation that this would be a one time fund for this, just this next year and that we would look at it at the end of the year and see what we actually really And that kind of tied into our, our wanting to talk about long range planning to see what we're actually spending on these things.
Yeah, that's not what it says. It says a one time vote for $150,000 for building maintenance and maintenance and repair and to create an annually occurring fund for other items, including vehicles, IT assets, key dutyware and equipment for a total of $420,000. Now, I personally don't have a problem with it, I just need to understand that the analysis went in it and maybe Kyle, you're the right person to ask.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. What budget and finance recommended for that was that this was just a one time for both of those. I'm not sure why it ended up saying what it, what you just read.
Well, we, in the past, we've always funded some to repair and replacement.
Right.
But somehow we, there were some years that didn't happen, I think. And so the other thing that did happen was some repairs and replacements didn't happen that needed to happen.
Right.
The preventive maintenance, so we want to avoid that. So I'm just questioning what the analysis was and how y'all arrived at that number, so.
You'll have to ask staff that question.
Okay.
What the analysis was.
And Kyle, maybe you have that answer.
Yeah, it looks like we initially suggested $500,000 with 285,000 of that being an annual commitment as a replacement fund, 150 for vehicles, 35,000 for IT assets, 25,000 for PD gear and 75,000 for equipment, mowers, et cetera. And then the rest was a maintenance fund for buildings. So then, so we started at 500, we got down to 420. And I'm looking through my notes, it looks like the, the recommendation was that we do 20,000 for IT, 150,000 for buildings and 270 as it just says R and R.
We were recommending an annual, if you don't have, you recommend a one-time.
Oh, okay. Were y'all recommending an annual commitment of $420,000 each time, or?
No, this is a one-time, one-time commitment.
So a one-time commitment of 420, okay. Okay, and that is, that is, just to educate all of us, that's still part of the general fund.
It's a separate fund for repair and replacement funds, strictly for general fund items.
Yeah, separate fund.
Okay, Sylvia, start again, please.
That building maintenance fund that was reduced from the amount staff recommended is only a one-time amount, and it is still mixed in with overall repair and replacement. I had had a discussion with the mayor, and I believe at the last council meeting, about perhaps establishing a special fund strictly for building maintenance, because it is very difficult to still compete with other items. For example, we had some emergency AC units. We had to withhold some of the pergola money to be able to repair the AC unit. So that kind of tripping over itself still happens.
Yeah, I think that's perfectly acceptable to have this. In fact, we haven't had it, and so then we had to do all these budget adjustments and also go through all these hoops. And so, because we don't always know what's going to break. And also, we need to do the preventive maintenance.
I repeat that, it should be capitalized.
It should be depreciated and capitalized that way, the building itself. So it's not, you know, so when we have an item that goes down on the building and we're replacing it, we are amending the depreciation schedule on the building and the longevity that that building should last, but we don't do any of that right now. It's just all mixed in.
That's right. Okay. I was just, wanted clarification on all of that process.
I think that if we decide to just go with the repair and replacement as-is, it's, it doesn't, it just essentially puts a Band-Aid on the longer-term maintenance, and it doesn't segregate it to its own fund for kind of tracking and saying, what is our true building maintenance cost versus what is our general repair and replacement? So we could, as part of this process, separate those out, or we could just acknowledge that we want to track this and bring this back as an item for our next budget planning session to see, does it merit its own fund at that time, right? You know, so, but this infusion is something that we haven't done before, it's something that we need to do building maintenance, and it's always generally come out of general fund or via amendments and things like that. So it's definitely needed, it's just a question of how much is it, and how do we track it? Having separate funds might make an easier way of tracking that, so.
Yeah, it sounds like there was analysis done, and y'all are comfortable with the amount and such, and so that's strong enough to get us through. And then it's something that y'all will evaluate next year as Budget and Finance, I would assume so. Okay. Thank you.
All right, Council, at this time, I'd like to open up for members of the public that wish to speak to this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Melissa Gonzalez, 26, Reese. I'm very heartened that you guys are having this discussion. It has been avoided in so many other council years, and I think it's something really important that we do talk about. I think it's critical to our long-range plans. I think we need to have, first, before we have this, we need to have the water study, so that we can actually see what our rates were and should be. And then you can plan for how that should go. So that's, to me, that's the baseline. And we have a way to do it for free, so we don't have to sit here and beg for the 15K or 20K for the water rate study, because we can get that done for free by the Texas Rural Water Association. So that's priority number one, is get the water rate study done for free. So then, apart from that, and now we're having to rely on my perhaps faulty memory, but it seemed around 13K was the average water use. If I, when I did the math, and again, this was a while back that I did this, but I wanted to say, because I was trying to figure out, where would we start building up from what people are usually using? And so, I think that takes care of your family of five kind of thing for how that is, because there's just some justification, because I think that that's like a fair concern. And we have a large lot, and we were kind of cruising along at our lower, at our lower rates, and then August came, and we jumped up to 14K, because my spouse went and looked at the water bill. And so, you know, I think, I think we can maybe see what we do about things like that for the August bump, to keep our place green, because we had to water then to keep the trees and the things like that. So we can sort of look at what we need to do, or you just budget that it's going to be high that month, and you can do some kinds of other things to accomplish that. I don't, I don't think, I disagree with Councilmember Rosen Garden, that we should tie this to the water tanks. I think the water tanks are a great idea on their own, and we just do that because it's a good thing to do. I like that idea of doing that. But I don't think it needs to be tied to the money we take away. I think we do that because that's our long-range plan, and we need to make ourselves solve it. I would have raised holy hell, if I could have, about the increase to the utilities for solid waste, but it wasn't in our plan. We said we would only increase it to the utility rates, like, for the water. And so, and that's not what our policy is. So I think we need to do a policy change that says, all utilities, if they go up, we pass the cost along, because that's how we're going to stabilize those costs. And, you know, but I didn't have a leg to stand on, because our policy doesn't say that. So we need to do a policy fix, that if we increase a utility, we pass it along. And that's how we cap our subsidy. Let me see what else. So I do like the tiers going up after, I wanted to say 10K, and then I got pushed by the math at that time, and that's five or six or seven-year-old math now, so I don't know what the numbers are. But I will tell you, the time that I researched it, that's what it was. And then I think from that point, we start saying, you pay for the water beyond that. And I don't mind the 3,000 going, you could make that argument and make that go away. I don't do that. But I do think that when we have people using more water than a baseline amount, whatever that baseline council decides it is, the people start paying full price for that, you know? Or the tiers, and we can, we get into arguments about that. But some initial heading in that direction, because that's how we're going to be able to get our budgeting and our long-range plans down to a dull roar. And, you know, we do it slowly, but the problem with doing it slowly is that we got that $1 for wastewater over 20,000, and that was seven or eight or nine or, I don't know how many years ago, but it was a long time ago. And I was going to stay there, and you can only do one thing at a time. So if you don't set a policy that does it already, it goes away. I'm the person who did policy on finance. I'm the one who would say, okay, here's the little time, the little window of time that we have, let's solve one problem this year. So I think it does need a long-term view. And if a lot of you aren't running again, now's the time to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak to the item? All right. Council, we'll go back to our discussion, and again, we're not taking action, is there things that we can continue to work on?
Yeah, what's our parking lot?
So I, the parking lot items that we had are not on this list, but I'll bring them back for our next council session.
Okay.
So, and then we can use that as a basis for, you know, discussion. But, you know, the items that we talked about were open space, you know, planning, plus some of the items that we identified in this discussion tonight. So that'll be part of our Tuesday session. Councilor Johnson.
Oh, sorry, Matt.
I was just going to say, I was texting with Sylvia. So to address the first question that was brought back on this list about the crime control reserves, so that could be a motion that's made, you know, staff can prepare backup, but that could be a motion that's made for budget adoption to say, you know, we just want to keep crime control reserves at 75,000, so you sweep the rest. However, that is, those would be restricted funds, because again, that's coming from the crime control tax, so it can only be spent on PD, or, you know, public safety, well, certain public safety expenses.
Right. I think that's outstanding. It would require some planning ahead of time, but yes, that would be outstanding.
Councilor Johnson.
So, Melissa, you brought up the, get a water study, this is going to be just educational here for me. You said, bring up a water study to determine, we kind of know what it should be, because Austin just goes like, this is how much it is. And then, but that doesn't take into account our own infrastructure that we have to upkeep. So even if it was got complete pass-through of the, of the cost, theoretically, it's still subsidy, because the rest of the general fund or whichever fund it is, I'm still learning all those, but would pick up the cost for maintaining infrastructure. But, so can you elaborate on what would be the fruit of the water study?
You have to have, for one thing, we don't really have necessarily equity between our commercial rates and our residential rates. And that's, that's a big question, because our sales tax is, are subsidizing our residential rates, which is questionable, very questionable. And we had someone, when I was on council, complain, because they somehow went from a residential rate to a commercial rate, and they said, what's your justification for this? And we really need to have that justification. And we need to know, and so then there's the cost of the infrastructure. And one of the things that the person from the Texas Rural Water Association said, you need to have full staffing. And we didn't have that at the time, so I quit pushing for it, because we couldn't actually say what it ought to cost, because their salaries need to be built into that, because we ought to be self-sustaining. Utilities generally make you money. That's what they should be doing. And if they're not going to make you money, they should at least pay for themselves. And that, so that's the way a utility works. And so, that person who comes in will say, in order to make this self-sustaining, which is what it ought to be, this is what the rate should be. And you need to have all of their salaries that are working on that in place. He says, so I can't, and she said, so make sure you have that. And that was the thing Katie was waiting for at one point, to have all the people there, and then we were cut so low, I certainly didn't want the math done when we didn't even have all the staff in place. But now, we're pretty close to it, Carolyn, where we should be, and we'll have a year of those numbers, and then we can do the actual analysis. But you have to have the infrastructure, you have to have the staff, you have to have the costs of your water service, all those things. Did I leave anything else out, Carolyn, that would be in those costs? So those are the things, and you have to have those in place. And so then, they'll calculate the numbers for what the actual cost of our water should be, and they know how to do it. And they'll do it for free. So we need to, and we need to do that particularly to justify our costs and any rate increases that we would need to do for the commercial area. So all of those things. Alfonso, did I do that correctly also? Yes. Okay. So I'm shocked that I did, but there it is.
Thank you. So does Austin Water give us like a wholesale rate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's not like we're buying something at retail, and if we ever, just the idea of going to the store and buying something, then trying to sell to someone else to, and then also get your markup, that would be a little bit difficult, but that is not, that's not the case.
No, but it's also not the markup, and this is an argument that certain people make, that we just do that. But we have to pay for our pipes, we have to pay for our staff, we have to pay for the utility billing, we have to pay for all the software. There's a whole lot. It isn't just free. And the people who are accused to argue, but we should only be paying $4 for that, it's just not true. I mean, that was, that's what the costs are. We know what our cost is, we divide it up, and that's all it is. It isn't. You know, and especially not with the cost of salaries soaring. So, you know, all of that has to be done, especially our infrastructure.
I've been through the infrastructure conversation many times, because we have solar panels, and some people get frustrated that Austin Energy doesn't credit you 100%. And I said, look at all the people, look at all this infrastructure, you need to pay for the infrastructure that, so that it's there. But, so, point taken. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
And just as a note, we have talked about this, but the city of Austin hasn't raised rates in four or five years. It's likely that we're going to be seeing that change as they negotiate the new wholesale rate for, you know, groups, and that's something that is going to drive up, if we pass along, costs, and so that we have to kind of factor that in, as well as another, you know, pending change, because it's driven by the wholesale rate that we pay, so. So Council, we will have another chance to review the budget. I will bring back parking lot items for our next meeting, we can continue to add to that. And I appreciate your flexibility as we go through the budget process. It's really good to have these conversations, in part educational, in part just city, you know, basic planning. Thank you, staff, as we go through our own, you know, questions and requests. So Matt, I'll get with you and Sylvia and Kyle about the parking lot items I've identified, so we can include those in the posting for the agenda. And then, we'll schedule our called meeting on, for next Tuesday.
Yeah, and I just wanted, if you wanted to let residents know, so there is an open town hall where they can comment specifically on the budget.
Okay.
It's been open since we filed the budget on, or you filed the budget on August 11th, but that's where the budget, the updated budget has been posted there. So there's no statements currently, but, you know, residents can make comments there, or they can make comments at any of the next two meetings we have, so.
Council, anything else on this item before we go back to our previous items? Mayor Protem.
Can we be more specific, when we will have meetings, and what, you say that we will have additional two meetings for the budget?
Correct. So there will be a meeting, it will, it was going to be, I believe it was just originally going to be a work session, but it will be a called meeting, because we have some separate, not the budget, but some separate action items that we need to take care of. But there will be another budget workshop, so similar to this, where we already have items to discuss, the parking lot items, some of the bring-back items, including urban forestry, the recommendations from Planning and Environmental Committee. So that meeting will be next Tuesday. I believe it'll start at 6:00 PM.
So today is the 6th, you say the 13th?
Yes, sir, a week from this evening.
October 13th?
Yes. And then...
September 13.
Or September, September 13. And then, Mayor Protem, depending where we are, how council feels, you know, the public, you know, we have that additional September 20th, you know, there's potential for, but we may not, we may not need it. And so then, the last Tuesday of the month, the 27th, will be the adoption.
You mentioned two topics, you say the topics of parking something?
The parking lot items, so items that were proposed, you know, either by committees or staff, that haven't, currently are not funded. It could be, you know, projects or other items.
So at this moment, this is the budget.
Correct.
So in this budget, is included that parking lot?
No, these are from our discussions this meeting and the prior meeting. We'll be bringing those back as a list of any additional changes, basically trying to document proposed changes to this budget, is all we'll be doing, so.
Okay. And like, for example, from this evening, Councilmember Johnson asked maybe discussing potentially increasing the urban forestry after our discussion tonight. So items like that, that we've taken notes of the past few, you know, months. So we'll discuss those next time.
We are open to send you, as a mayor, some of the things that we believe, only that we discuss in public.
If you want to get it on the agenda, please send them a list of specific items that you want to include on that for potential changes to the budget by this Thursday.
Thursday by noon would be helpful, so the mayor can get with staff, and we can get it posted.
It's not to say that we can't add them also, it's just that it'll be nice to have in the backup.
Yes, yes, yes. I understand that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Council, I'm going to go back to Agenda Item Number 7. Consider an Act on Amending the Land Development Code Sections 150.014 and 150.019 for improvements to the city's development process, and requiring more detailed information to be required at Seminole for development applications. So there's two parts to this item, Council. One is the proposed changes to the code itself, which is the red-line text that's here. The other is, if we are adopting these changes, it's setting a fee schedule or having staff bring back potentially recommendations for a fee schedule for permit submissions. So that's just to keep a reminder that there is a component here, that by asking for fees upfront, we have to set a fee, we don't have those currently. And go ahead, Sylvia.
We're on the land development code item.
Oh, okay. So, Mayor and Council, this item really is contrary to the public, the land development code. It is specifically to avoid that kind of comment and that kind of confusion before the land development code gets amended, before the comprehensive plan gets done. It really is a rearrangement of the process, so that we don't have a hot scotch development process without changing the current regulations. This really is to allow the community to have a holistic picture of the project before we take it in. It is very expensive and very costly, both for staff and the developer, to have a project submitted that we know is never going to make it through the process, because it has what may be called a fatal flaw. So really, we didn't even... So really, we didn't even change Appendix A, we didn't change Appendix B, we just moved it up in the process.
Councilmember Johnson, you requested this item get pulled, so.
Yes, I, I was there for the conversation about, you know, moving things around timeline just a little bit. The, so I, I see a change from 10 to three business days. The, I, I want to, is that enough time?
Yeah, the zoning commission, there was questions again raised about the amount of time for three business days. Again, this is just for staff to receive the application and, and verify that everything, that the application is deemed complete. Not that it's, not that there could be a potential problem with, with something that's submitted. Like there, there, you know, there's an issue with the site plan and it's going to require, you know, but just that, okay, they went through the checklist, everything that is in Appendix A and Appendix B that's needed for this zoning amendment, for this variance, for this BOA variance, has been submitted, right? The fee, the, the site plan. It's just, that gives staff three business days to just, you know, so when we receive, formally receive the application, we have three days to deem it in complete or incomplete. And then we, you know, if it's incomplete, it, you know, it's.
So the, things rarely take the number of days. Like doing this never took 10 days. It was more or less just to ride out the wave of a cert, other things that you needed to do, a surge of applications, this and that. Do you feel confident that three days is enough time? And if it was, I, I, I'm not trying to add time to the schedule, but I want to make sure that you guys don't get in a, in a pinch there.
So, I mean, this, again, this is not, you know, sending it to the engineers for review. This is just literally staff going through, okay, they've, you know, submitted everything that they, that they need. And I'm confident, I mean, we're, that's one of the things, we're small enough, I think we can touch base and say, you know, and we can, you know, quickly say, okay, this, this application is good, check. And then it's in the system, and then that then lessens the amount of time that it's on the, the shot, or, or, well, it's, the shot clock is, is, you know, established by the state. And then that gets it through the system faster because once we have that application complete, then we've got to, you know, depending on what the development is, if it's a zoning amendment, we've got to get, you know, scheduled zoning. We've got to send public hearing notices out, you know.
So it's like, it's buying us a week, it's buying the deliberative process another week, essentially.
Yes, yes.
So, and in a vacuum, this is fine, but as we're all aware, we're about to face some staff situations. Is this something that anyone on staff can do? It's just a checklist, you just go through, everything looks fine, or?
This would be, again, this would be, I think, a development application. So again, and these are for, well, these co-changes are specifically for zoning amendments, at least for the Appendix A and Appendix B.
Oh. Yeah.
So for example, on a plat, on a subdivision submittal, from one lot to two lots or one lot to multiple lots, let's say Brody had been submitted, if they don't have a current tax certificate, they cannot replat the property. And/or if they have a mortgage on that property, they need their lien holder's information. The lien holder needs to also submit approval. And so everything that gets submitted should pass, we're not, we're not checking for the accuracy of things at that point. We are just checking that it is a complete submittal. And the same thing for zoning. If zoning is submitting a request for rezoning, for example, kind of like the Triviana's, that they don't have the base property owner's approval to submit the zoning, then we shouldn't even take that into the system. So we're moving things out from the backend into the frontend to be able to decide whether we're even going to take it in. And then once we take it in, that's a whole different review process on how good is that application? And do we need to kick it out of the process to start fresh with good and accurate information? As opposed to trying to piecemeal it along throughout the process, which, you know, frustrates everybody at that point in time because you don't have a complete picture.
And, and in terms of staffing, like who would review, you know, you know, Melissa or another front desk or another admin person could be, could receive it. But according to, you know, current staffing structure, the city administrator and then the assistant city administrator would be, would have the, the power to deem that application complete as they are, you know, over development, those two staff members. And then, you know, possibly depending on what the project is or, you know, verifying with the Public Works Director, okay, yes, they have everything they need for this, this type of application.
Councilmember Rosengard?
Just to help along with Matt and then ask a question. It would be no different than if someone walked into your office one day and said, do you see, is this complete? It would take you 10 minutes to go through and see all the backup is there, everything's done? Yep, done. So three days is more than enough time. The only reason they're asking for three days is what if somebody walks in, drops it down at the reception desk, but Matt, who is responsible for it this week, is in a meeting for the next three hours? He can't get to it right away. So then you've got three days. That's the only, only reason I would see that. What I wanted to ask is, I feel, and help me if, if I remember right, that we already decided on a fee because I remember different cities and what they charge. And, and Alfonso made the motion with the dollar amount. And so that fee is already decided on by council. Anybody else, or was it something else?
Are you speaking recently? I believe that was for utility, utility fees.
It was like.
Or, well, we did pass new, when we, when the city decided to pursue my permit now, we did, and that was last year, we decided to update our development fees, which, and we added some technology fees. And I believe, I believe we added an early, an early assistance.
It was like Rollingwood BK?
Early assistance fee, Sylvia?
We did, but it's, it is very, very, very minimal. In, in the proposed fees, we're hoping to add a plan review fee, as we discussed with the council before, where at submittal, they should be paying their fee. Because if the project doesn't make, for whatever reason, staff has already expended the time, the effort, the energy, and potentially the third party costs for that project. So regardless of the project makes or not, there's work that's been done. So the plan review fee in most jurisdictions is non-refundable.
And, and we do have, we do have application fees, you know, for, when, when things need to come to council or zoning. We do have those application fees in place, but we don't have a plan review fee. It's just the application fee.
We don't have a plan review fee in McComas charges, Freeland-Hertz charges. We don't have adequate site plan development fees. Our ordinance just says third party fees. And so for example, for the 290 project, we hit them with a, I don't know, about a $12,000 fee when they thought they were done. But we hadn't appropriated the engineering, the third, you know, the third party review fees until the end. And quite honestly, that project continues and they should still owe more fees toward the end of the project, but our code isn't built that way.
And, and council member, you also might be thinking of, and this is another fee that's going to be brought back with that updated fee ordinance, is short term rental. So we, we, we discuss fees for short term rentals, maybe that's what you.
There's also the utility, the late utility fee.
Yeah, that was the most, that was the most recent fee. And Mayor Protem Carmona did make that motion. We adopted bath drops, but that was only related to utility delinquency. But we will be bringing back a fee ordinance with the, some of these proposed fees that we're discussing in addition to the short term rental fee. And again, those fees can be amended on the floor by council before that ordinance is passed and those fees are either set or updated.
So the, the action that we could take tonight is just to adopt the language, but the fees would come back? We wouldn't have to set the fee tonight?
Yes, fees are, fees are always a, a separate ordinance. So we would, you know, the action would be, and bring back, you know, fees. But we'll, we want to do that with the budget so that the fees are effective October 1st.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'm going to move we amend the Land Development Code Sections 150.014 and 150.019 for improvements to the city's development process and requiring more detailed information to be required at submittal for development applications.
So motion is there second?
I will second.
Second? That opens up for further discussion. Any members of the public wish to speak to the assignment? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. That's going to take us to agenda item number eight. Consider acceptance of the bid for Public Works Reception Area Enclosure Project by HCS Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $54,900. And Councilmember Johnson, again, this is one that you had a question about.
Y'all are unlucky to have got me on like five cups of coffee when I was reading the agenda. So there's a lot of questions that came out of it. The, so back in June 11th, June, June 20th, I thought I wrote it down here, but I didn't. We denied a bid for this project.
It was higher.
It was higher. It was, it was using bulletproof glass and it was almost twice, if not more than this bid.
It was over $100,000.
Right, so I mean, that, that's where my, my question ends up. The, I had a number here. The, the amount was so high, it was, it was difficult to even kind of appreciate. The, I, I took that number and I removed bulletproof glass. I assume this is not bulletproof glass.
Right, this is not bulletproof glass.
This is mine. So, and then I, I took, took off that, took off that amount and then just took the amount from this other one, which was, so I removed 90,000 from the rocks and then added 8,700, and that put us at 71,000, which is a little bit more in the, a little bit more in the ballpark. Still higher, no doubt. What, what was in the recommendation? Was the recommendation for bulletproof, or sorry, what was in the, our request? Was it bulletproof?
So in this request, we did not request bulletproof glass.
Did, do we give the rock a chance to?
We had to open it back up to bids for anybody who would be interested in applying. They did not reapply at that time. So this was, we only received the one bid to the project, and so that is all we can work with at that point.
That's it? Yep. I move we accept the bid for the Public Works Reception Area Enclosure Project by HCS Incorporated in amount not to exceed $54,900.
So motion to accept the bid, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Reese seconds? Further discussion on the assignment? My only comment is I'm pleased that we're able to move forward on this with a reasonable bid and much needed improvements to the Public Works, which will hopefully get underway shortly. All right.
Before, and my post-motion comment is, I grew up not having these cages around people. I think it's incredibly unfortunate that this is the spot we're in. I almost understand it over at the police department, people can come in kind of hot. But it's just such a bummer that this is what we have to spend our money on. And we should all, we should really digest what we, I don't know. I don't know. That was it.
Councilor Rosengard?
Personally, I would prefer not to spend this amount of money to put someone in, in a cage and just keep the front door locked and you have to ring the bell like we do, we did during COVID. Ring the bell and someone comes and lets you in. And then you discuss whatever you have to with them right there. That's it. That, to me, was a perfect solution, in my opinion.
Is that, is that a substitute motion? Just trying to get.
Mayor Protem?
I, I think that I pass, that's okay. I don't have any comments.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay? Okay. So council, that moves to our last two agenda items, which are both related. And as you know, the city administrator Sylvia tendered her resignation on August 30th, effective September 30th. The first agenda item is one of the things that administratively I hope we can agree on approving because it's been our practice with most of staff to pay out accrued vacation even in excess of our policies as a result of the extenuating circumstances from COVID. So strictly by our policies, we have a limit for zero to five, or one to five year employees or zero to five years employees, that it's a cap of 120 hours of vacation. And so, you know, we've, in the past, I don't know how often it happens, but we've paid out more or excess of that. That's kind of an administrative function, but this is something that council has the authority to approve. It, very, very sad to see Sylvia leaving, she's been a, a great asset for the city. I think this is one way obviously that we can make sure that we're treating her with the same, you know, you know, same way we've treated all of our staff in this way. So that's the first agenda item. The second agenda is the number 11, that's to talk about the transition and go into the details about how we want to operate with the, 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 once, you know, the effective September 30th, what we want to do. So with the first item, council, if there's further discussion on that, we can do so or we can take a motion. Councilmember Johnson?
I, I just, I'm playing a little Sons of Valley staff trivia here. And probably number one, does anyone have any guesses? I, I bet it's Sam Cantu on this list, do we know? You? I am sorry. Were you here before, Sam? You just got to enter in the system and so you're number one? You're number one, all right. Also, my only other note was, super support this. At some point, do we want to think about reinstating the kind of limit on rollover? Because it calls out COVID specifically, and, and I totally, totally understand that.
I think we do, but I also think it's worth maybe a, a survey of comparable cities and what they're offering as far as carryover for different tiers of service. 120 hours seems, I'm not sure if that's normal or, or on par. And so I'd like to, but, you know, part of that, I think, is to say, should we, are these, are these competitive, right? I think it's, it's a value to us. But yes, I think we do need to, you know, look at sunsetting and, you know, I think to get back to our policies, yeah.
It's also, it's a competitive issue, but it's also an internal control that you want staff to take vacation, you want people filling in their role. And it's just one of those internal controls that we want to have. So we really want to, in the future going forward, we want this to happen. People take their vacation.
I, I'm now just realizing that this is probably anonymized for a reason, so I'm sorry for calling that out.
Senator Mason?
I'm on a roll. Let's go, yeah. Move we approve the payout of the city administrator's accrued vacation time over 120 hours.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion on the assignment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All right. Thank you, council, for that. All right, so let's move on to agenda number, I number 11. Consider an act on the following items related to the resignation of the city administrator effective September 30th, 2022. So council, I put together the backup for this, so if you find errors in that, that's my fault. I was working on this to try to compare against the process that we went through in 2019. Fortunately, there's two members of the, the council, myself and Councilmember Rosengard, that were part of that process. And so I think both of us can speak to, you know, the, any particulars that, that we have as part of our discussion. We also have members of staff that were present during that time as well. So I did break this out into two areas and potentially, you know, action on, on both these areas. Just as a, kind of a brief reminder, when we went through a transition process before, it took us about seven months. That's to set some expectations, you know, if we go through a recruiting process, you know, even before the recruitment firm gets underway, there's time to organize, to respond to bids, to put together, you know, potential changes to the job description. You know, I think that seven month was, you know, something that we could look at as a benchmark, but it's certainly something that we don't have to take that long. You know, I think we could, we could look at ways of managing that process to, to try to keep. know, I think we could, we could look at ways of managing that process to try to keep a shorter duration, but most of the recruitment firms, when we interviewed them, I believe, came back with a 90 to 120-day window from when they began their contract. So that's just, again, if we're going through a recruitment firm process, that's setting expectations. That squarely puts us in the hands of the future council. That's also just an acknowledgement that most of the major decisions, you know, and in fact, part of the process would happen after the elections. And so that's another consideration for this council is how much to do proactively versus how much to, you know, wait until the council that will ultimately, if we go down the route, again, this is all proposed based on a timeline of, you know, going through a recruitment firm. Those are considerations I did outline in the backup. There are a number of firms that work in this area. There are, I went to, on the city administrator's recommendations, the Texas City Manager Association has basically a publication of firms in this. There's about 20 firms that are listed for that organization. Many of them are the same ones that, you know, we solicited before, but part of this process would be reaching out to them and seeing if they'd be interested in proposing a proposal together for the city and cost. Of course, there's also the firm we worked with last time, which is Chris Hartung. He's also, you know, one of the firms that we've worked closely with as a city, you know, we could go back to, and he might be available for servicing this as well. That's part one, is just discussion about the transition, how we want to approach this and getting council direction on how to proceed so we can bring, start bringing back items potentially as soon as the next meeting, you know, depending on, you know, what the next steps in the process are. The second part of this item is consideration of, consider appointment of an interim city administrator effective October 1st, 2022. And so this is something we also may want to take into executive session. If we're discussing specific personnel items, I'd recommend we do that. If there's questions that we can deliberate there, that's appropriate under the Texas Code where we can deliberate personnel matters pursuant to section 551.074. There are, any considerations that we do there could include supplementing staff with interim temporary help. Texas First Group is an organization that I spoke with last week with regards to needs and they provide temporary help at all levels of staff. So, you know, from interim city administrator to interim assistant city administrator to interim police chief to interim public works director, so they can provide any of those services if we foresee the need to or want to leverage that. Any consideration of, you know, staff also might, you know, be offset, but have to consider salary increases for temporary duties. When we did this last time, there was a, the then assistant city administrator Sarah Wilson was appointed the interim director for four months and had, you know, an increase in salary as, during that time when those additional duties were being performed. We did something similar for, I believe, Lieutenant Andrew Chee back when we were doing the police chief search. So we have, you know, those to go back to. So, staff, I would recommend that we do use an open recruitment process. I think it's to our benefit to work as a council towards identifying the needs that we have and working with a firm who can, executive search firm essentially, to do that. I'd also recommend that we, you know, appoint an interim leader, but that could be direction to, like I said, either bring on temporary personnel for that role or hiring within, or bringing somebody within our own staff. And I think it's important that we decide that quickly so that we can have a transition plan that's fully supported by council and staff. We are going to have a meeting next week, so there's some, you know, we could bring this back as next week's end item, but this might be, my recommendation would be that we accomplish as much as we can tonight. So with that, council, like I said, if, anything that we deal with personnel matters, I would recommend that we go to executive session just for that discussion, but otherwise, we can begin with any questions that staff or questions that council have. Councilmember Rosen Garden?
I recommend that we post on TML first off for job postings and also we might consider calling some of the people who applied the last time and see where they are three years I still have my information.
Yeah, I still do too.
Yeah, I was, I think that's a good suggestion, but I would probably, unless something happens very quickly, I would probably go ahead and get the ball started for an executive search company.
We can do that concurrently. It's certainly going to take them some time to respond to us with proposals.
Yeah, I mean, I think the sooner we get started on this, the better.
You could start talking to Hartung, but just don't hire him yet until we meet again because the others were all more expensive, weren't they? What's the matter? Well, you can't talk to him without a contract? Okay.
There's a legal line there, so just be careful.
Yeah, I don't know, with the process that we used for contacting the executive search firm before, if it was something that was just done based on, you know, reaching out to them individually and soliciting, or if it was more formal than that, but I would recommend that we do contact multiple groups.
Is it an RFP or?
It was an RFP last time.
I thought Clay recommended Hartung and so we went with Hart.
Do we have to do?
I believe there were two, I think there were two, two SGR, and I was who the council was going to proceed with and then there wasn't.
What I remember was that Councilmember Cardone at the time, she listed several in the initial meeting right after the resignation, so it was like the February 2nd meeting of 2019. And in that list, there were seven or eight agencies. The next meeting, you know, essentially was bringing back, you know, the list of agencies that responded to the request for solicitation, but I don't believe there was a formal posting in that time. We'd have to go back to the city history and see that. I think it was maybe Mayor Cardone just reaching out to them saying, we have a search for the city administrator. We would, if you want to provide, you know, your submission packet, then we'll do that by, we need it by this date. So that would be the process that I would follow in the absence of having, you know, guidance from our.
Yeah, we don't have to have any legal step bid process or?
I don't believe, we didn't do that last time. I don't believe we need to do that this time, so.
Yeah, it looked like there were five proposals that were received from the different firms on, at least February, the March 5th, 2019 meeting.
Yeah, and I think that was just Mayor Cardone directly reaching out to them and there were more than five that she reached out to. Those are the five that provided response.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
So, I mean, if you know a firm, send it my way and I can include them in the list. Otherwise, I'm going to go by the Texas City Managers Association list that is posted on their website as a starting point.
And we have.
Yeah, TML might also have that too.
We probably have the same information from, when we posted it before.
Correct.
So that could be posted pretty quickly on TML too, so, on the website.
Well, what we did last time, it was interesting, I was going back and reviewing the agendas and the notes, we started with a revision of the job itself. We had a work session where we revised it and then coming out of the work session, we just basically rewrote it. I think that we can just go with the one that we rewrote three years ago and we're pretty close. We can bring it back next meeting for review before we post it, just to make sure that we don't have any further changes.
Good.
But that would be my recommendation is rather than trying to, because we're going to be working with a search firm to, you know, characterize the needs, but I would suggest that if we bring it back on the 13th as this is the post-job description, are there any proposed changes? We can make them at the time and then post that to TML.
Yeah, okay. Do we need a motion?
No, well.
That's just direction to you.
Direction to me, yeah. I think it's because if we're not, we're not adopting a, you know, we're not adopting a proposal this time, it's just the process and I want direction on where council wants to go with this.
Then maybe I would suggest we go into executive session and go through the next part of it.
So is there a motion to move into executive session and if you can also cite the Texas Government Code, just so we have that. Should be at the bottom of the agenda.
Oh, man. All right.
Before we have that motion, if we could have a motion to extend our meeting past nine o'clock so that we can continue our deliberations without having to come out of executive session?
Yeah, I move we extend the meeting past nine o'clock.
For up to an hour.
For up to an hour.
All right, is there a second to that motion to extend?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor extending the meeting, if necessary, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Okay. And with that, if you can move.
Okay, I move that we move into executive session for deliberation, including but not limited consultation with the city attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551.071, and Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct, section 1.05, deliberation of personnel matters pursuant to Texas Government Code, section 551.074.
Barbara, is that? Is that, okay, Barbara gives a thumbs up, all right. All those in favor moving to executive session, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed? All right, we're moving to executive session at 9:48 PM. All right, we're moving to executive session at 9:48 PM.
Ready to go with recordings and everything?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're recommitting an open session at 9:42 PM. We're not going to take any actions tonight. I got direction from council on the next steps in our process. And I'll be working with staff and with various groups on our plan, especially with we are going to go forward with the recruitment process. And so I'll be contacting those firms. We'll be bringing back more information in our next council meeting, which is scheduled for the 13th, on specific actions that we are going to consider taking. So with that, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Will I make a motion to adjourn?
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All does it favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say nay. All right, we are adjourned at 9:43. Thank you all.
Early. Man, what do you want to do?